Good afternoon. I call to order this special meeting of the Scottsdale Unified School District. It is Thursday, March 7th, and the time is 3:07 PM. We will have a roll call, starting from my far right.
Sandy Kravitz.
Barbara Perleberg.
Allison Beckham.
And Patty Beckman. All board members are present, except for Board Member Greenberg, who is available telephonically, and we do have a forum.
Is he on the phone?
He is on the phone.
Then you ask him to sit.
Can you say here, Jan?
Or your name.
Do you want me to ... yeah, I can say Jan Michael Greenberg.
Great. Okay. Board Member Beckham, would you like to lead us in pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? So move. Board Member Beckham makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Kravitz makes the second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. We move on to Agenda Item 4, Information and Discussion Items. A Cherokee Elementary School, Rebuild/Renovate, Orca Winslow Project Update. Dr. Kriegerd.
Thank you, President Beckman, members of the board. We have with us members of Orca Winslow, who will give us an update on the progress so far with Cherokee, and I think Dennis Rayler will make the formal introductions and start
Good afternoon, President Beckman, members of the board. Dr. Kriegerd, it is with great pleasure that we bring to you an update on what we've been doing with the Cherokee rebuild versus renovate community and visioning committee efforts. So we've got Tom O'Neill and Saravanan Bala ... Bala? With us today, and they've got a wonderful presentation to share with you. So do we have any members of our committee?
Whoa.
Mr. Chandler. We've had some great participation, both at the level of the community and the visioning committee, so I'd like to take just a second to thank them, because they have been putting in some effort for that. So I'm going to leave it to Tom and his team to do the presentation, and if there's any questions at the end, we'll take care of them.
Thank you, Dennis. Let me pull the presentation up here. Board President and Governing Board, Dr. Kriegerd, we're pleased to be here tonight for this meeting. We've taken on this challenge. I'm really proud of how this is rolling out. We're very early in the stages of the development of the study of replace versus renovate. First off, I'm going to introduce our team. Our firm has 47 years of experience in educational facilities design. We have 85 folks in our office here in Phoenix, 30 of which are in our education studio, and that's a real benefit to our client in terms of some of these community meetings where we've had robust attendance of 60 to 80 folks, and we've had to break them down into smaller groups, and we've been able to support the development of the design through that effort. Our firm is recognized as one of the leaders in sustainable design, and I trust that you'll see that come through in your design for the Cherokee replacement. One of the hallmarks of our design approach is transparency, collaboration, and consensus. That's how you get off the right foot, and that's how you see a successful development of a design. And I would say that I think we're off on the right foot. Visby is our partner in charge. I am the Architect of Record. Saravanan is our Senior Project Manager. Fatima Garcia is our Project Manager. Scott Sawinski is our designer, and Christine is from Creative Services, and she's assisting us with the community outreach. Oops, I missed one here. There we go. Okay, let's talk about an overview of the project, Cherokee Elementary School. This study is to examine high innovation renovation versus replacement. Before we step into doing one or the other, let's evaluate with the community's assistance as to what is the best direction for the district. Come on. Okay. So it shouldn't all be based on dollars, but dollars are very important. We want to establish, and we have memorable goals, we want to analyze the existing building's conditions, so we understand what it would take to renovate it. We want to develop a program. Cherokee is a unique school. It has 50 percent of the regular attendance from outside the boundary, which is important and very nice. We have a number of special programs for both gifted and challenged. We want to address those needs. So the space program is very important to this project, to understand that right from the beginning. Community input, very important. And I'd say we're getting some really good community input, and budget, of course. On this schedule here, it talks about the path that we're going down. We have three or we have four main groups that we're working with. Community at large, and we have five community engagement meetings that are set up. We've gone through the first three. We actually add 3.5. Through a poll, we determined that we should offer a community engagement meeting midday. Consequently, we had that two Fridays ago, and we only had a few people show up from the community, but we wanted to offer that. We also offered at that same day input from Stugel, which offered some really neat -- the young kids had some really neat input. So we're talking the students that are in the school to the community that border the school. Very important. Visioning Committee. Walt has done a fine job of assembling 25 community members that border the school, staff that work in the school, and parents that attend the school, or there's children that attend the school. This visioning committee, we've been meeting with every other week, and it's been a very robust, as a matter of fact, last night, Walt, I think that was a pretty robust meeting we had. We're starting to merge or evolve a concept for renovation and new replacement. Very rough concept, so that we can put a number to it to understand how will this work and how will it play out in terms of phases. Cabinet has been informed through the process, understanding where we're going with this, understanding what this, how this compares to other facilities, and making sure they're in step with, or we're in step with their expectations. And of course, the governing board. You have the ultimate authority. Little more detailed schedule, some of the dates coming up that are very important. Last night, as I mentioned, we met with the visioning committee, and we reviewed a concept, a very preliminary concept for renovation and new construction, and we got some really good input. It actually ran about a half hour longer than it normally does, and we were live. We were moving things around and adjusting the concepts to their satisfaction, responding to their needs. On March 25th, we bring it back to the community. And what our goal is, to get the visionary committee to give us input, bring it to the community, so we get their input, and we'll bring it back to you with that input. So it's not something that's in reverse, it's something that we're bringing to you with the support of the community at large. That meeting will be on April 11th. Obviously, it'll be in the Board Packet in advance of that, I believe, April 4th. We'll be presenting our recommendation, and then you'll have a chance or an opportunity to digest that, and on April 16th, vote on supporting renovation versus new construction. We will continue meeting with the visionary group through the design process. They're going to be essential as we drill down into more detail and more detail. So we feel that they'll probably be engaged through June, and at that point, we'll be bringing back to the board an update on the design. You'll start to see it in three dimensions, what it's going to look like. We anticipate in December, a governing board presentation by the contractor for a guaranteed maximum price. And so you can see, we've got a lot to accomplish. We're on track to do that, and I feel very comfortable that the way we're tracking with this, it'll be a successful project. Renovation is going to take at least three phases versus new construction, at least two phases. And the reason for that is, what we've gotten is feedback that says you want to be fairly close to where the existing facility is. You don't want to go flip it over to the ball field, has some negative impact on certain folks. In doing so, we need to have what's called swing space. Swing space is where you develop new space, you move the children out of an existing building into that swing space, and you either demo to replace, or you modernize what's existing. So in the renovation, it's a little bit tougher, because we have less opportunity for the swing space. So that comes twofold. One, a longer construction schedule will be general conditions or cost, and a little bit more disruption to the existing campus. So stepping back, this process, as I mentioned, there are five visioning meetings. We start with the community and our design way apart, and we want to bring it all together. First meeting, visioning, we established memorable goals. We wanted something very generic from the community to inform us, what is it do you want out of this school? Second meeting, facilities' needs. We developed a matrix, and we had what's called World Cafe, where the participants in that community meeting moved through three stations, and we looked at relationships that are desired and relationships that are not desired. Really good input came out of that. Then we had the fun exercise, but it's challenging exercise, of a design charrette. And the design charrette is an exercise where we had taken the program and the site, and we broke down to six stations, and we had the community working with our architects. This is where our large firm team really came into play. We had six stations and manned by two to three architects to help facilitate the design. The important part here is threefold. Number one, our community will understand the challenges that we're dealing with in this replacement. They'll have their fingerprint on this design. Number two, we will be able to extract some good ideas. Our goal was not to find the best design solution, run with it, it was get some ideas out there. We came out with 48 precepts, or precepts that would feed into a design solution. And number three is that it helps us in moving forward and developing a design that will respect the community's desires. So the charrette happened in the community, charrette happened at the visionary group, we did a charrette in our office, and I think the outcome has been very powerful. So the fourth step is to develop a recommendation for feedback, and then refine it, and the fifth will be bring back a design solution to the community. So fourth will be happening on March 25th, and then we'll bring it to you for a recommendation. As this is going along, there's a number of things that are happening behind the scenes. Through the holiday period, we had our engineering team go through and analyze the existing building. We have a 65-page report that goes in great detail in terms of the needs and desires and challenges of the existing facility. Very important to have that whether we replace or renovate. We also have developed a site analysis, which feeds into how we want to look at this school in terms of citing it, responding to the environment, a sustainable design. The visioning recap, here are some images of our activities. I think a number of the board members participated in this, it was pretty exciting. We first put out there a couple of questions, and those questions were fed to the community and reacted to electronically, so as people were responding, we could start to percolate what are the important outcomes that are desired for this memorable goal. What are your top three favorite things about Cherokee? And this is the graphic that came out of that. What are your top three things you would like to see improved? Security has been in the forefront of about every project we are dealing with, and it's one right here. The cool thing here is, we have in our visioning group, the Chief of Police from Town of Paradise Valley, and he is your advocate to make sure that as we develop this project, that he sees the needs that he feels are being addressed. And of course, James will be fed into the project as it evolves itself. What are some of the things that this design team should consider? Security. Here we go again. Safe and secure environment is utmost to the community. So we started assembling these ideas, and we started looking at what are going to be percolating to be the top four. And we assembled it into the top four, safety and wellness, and there's some subbullets, uniquely Cherokee, subbullets, student-centric learning, high-performance learning environment. Now we'll use these items to measure the success of renovate versus new construction. We'll take these, and part of our rubric will be to measure and look at these concepts. Are they addressing this, or is there a blank here that we're not hitting? And I got to say, in renovation, there's some challenges. As you move through the hexagonal building, as we learned, you're going to lose kids around the corner, and that's a challenge to Walt and his staff. Putting daylight into the concrete walls, another challenge. So we're looking at that, and we're making sure we're working towards that end. I mentioned earlier, a second community meeting was a World Cafe, as we call it. And we moved around three stations. Each station had a matrix that addressed support in specialty spaces, educational spaces, and site and outdoor spaces. We wanted to hear from the community, and then drilling down into the staff, in terms of what are the relationships, for instance, you wouldn't want a dumpster at the front door, and where would the police substation want to be? So these relationships were very important to us to understand. This is an example of the adjacency matrix. It's packed full of information, but it's a little bit, from the layman, when you look at it, it's a little bit tough to understand what is here, but it was very guiding for us as a design team. Usually, matrix for the third, and there we go. Charrette recap. This is the third community meeting. And again, I mentioned, this is an exercise that is fun, but also challenging. We gave some direction, and we assisted the different groups in evolving their design solutions. Here are some images, both at the community meeting, but also at the visionary meeting level. You can see this Chief of Police in the lower right-hand corner. You see Walt in the upper left-hand corner with Dennis. These were very important to us in terms of evolving the ultimate concept. And here's some pieces to it. What we did is, we extracted out of these concepts, as I mentioned earlier, 48 precepts, 48 elements that should go in every design, guide that design. And then Stugel. Stugel was like two Fridays ago, about three Fridays ago, we challenged them to think about what they'd like to see in their school, the student government. They came back with collages, and they're quite interesting. Some of it is out of our control, better food menus, but we expect that. It's exciting. I think there's a couple that we can incorporate, and then they'll see their fingerprint on this design, and that's really important. So again, process-driven design. We've completed the charrette, and we're now into the gelling of a concept for renovation and new construction. That's the end of my presentation, but I want to mention, we have established a rubric that includes the memorable goals. There's 15 elements in there that we want to measure. We want to look at the 48 precepts, which are including facility needs, existing conditions assessment, site analysis, and charrette activity. Those are the 48 precepts. We want to consider budget, and we want to consider project duration. Project duration has a budgetary element, but it also has a disruption and a noise factor not only to the school, but to the community. Trying to keep this short and sweet, and so that is my presentation, or our presentation, I should say. Open it up for questions.
Do we have any questions? Board Member Beckham?
Thank you so much for the presentation and the update, and several board members have had the opportunity to come to the community events, and they've been very well managed, and I think receptive by the community, so thank you for that.
I have a question. Originally, when we spoke as a group, it was proposed and thought that the renovation versus replacement, the engineers would come out, kind of look at what that design would be, and then there would be the discussion, and fairly quickly, I think before, like by February, we would have had some idea of what the recommendation would be. And from the update, that has been pushed back, and I'm wondering why we were unable to do what originally we thought we could, that the group thought that they could do. And then secondarily, what is going to be, since you're going to describe what's different, what needs to be done to get to that next step?
Okay. Excellent question. We could have accomplished it in that timeframe, our original timeframe, but we felt it is essential to have our contractor, who has a pulse of the market, to weigh in on the value of renovation versus new construction. And I use the analogy, I as architect, always bidding low, I'm always optimistic, but they do have a pulse on some of the things that are happening on a monthly and quarterly and yearly basis in terms of the market forces. And so we feel, we recognize this has an impact on not just this project, but the ultimate success of your entire bond. And so we want that number to come in strong. It may not be the only metric that we're going to measure it by, but it has to be darn accurate. And so everything's been kind of pushed out a little bit to accommodate bringing on a CM to do the cost analysis. We did consider doing a third-party to look at that, but we decided they don't have the ownership in the ultimate success like the contractor would.
So what you're proposing is that we approve a contractor who would look at renovation and be able to provide a budget for that, and then provide a budget for replacement, and that's that big part of the analysis that then would be put forward to us, correct? And that that contractor, therefore, would be the contractor whichever way is chosen?
Correct. And that is going to be a very intense exercise. Very often, as you go through schematic design, design development, contract documents, you kind of build on that information, and the number gets more refined, less contingency in it. In this instance, we have done a lot of homework on the existing conditions, we'll have a very sound concept, and we'll have a lot of information. So our design team, including our engineers, will sit down with the contractor and potentially his subcontractors, and come up with a cost for renovation versus new construction that we can feel really comfortable with. We feel that's important.
Did it just become more complex than we realized? I was envisioning we'd get some kind of idea of what that replacement would be versus an idea, versus actually spending the money to get analysis on both of those entities to that depth that you're speaking.
As I mentioned, every design opportunity presents itself with a different process. We use a lot of these tools in a lot of our work, but we also recognize that this is an important number to have, and it's not just another project. It's an important number that not only, you know, weighs in on this project, but the balance of having impact on the balance of your bond. And so we felt it should be a little more robust at this point than we normally would have.
And then, and this is, I'm just kind of making this assumption, then, if you're looking at replacement and complete, or renovation versus a complete replacement, you might pick a different contractor, because they're very, very different. But in this case, it's sounding like that the dollar amounts are going to be closer than maybe what we anticipate, and therefore, you can really look at choosing one for doing both. Would that be a fair assessment or assumption?
That's a good question. I would suggest that every contractor proposing on this project had understanding, they had to present qualifications for both, renovation and new construction. They came in with those qualifications, and they knew that we, beautiful thing about this process, everything's out there in terms of our design. It's posted on the website. Everybody proposing understands where we're going, where we're at, and what we're doing. So they had to come in, or they will come in, with presentation of their skills in renovation and new construction. And we have to make that decision as to what's most qualified, either way we go. Many of the contractors that are in public education have experience in both. There are some that don't have a robust experience in one or the other, and some don't have robust experience in K-12 public education. And so we want to pick the contractor that has the best mix.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board Member Kravitz?
Thank you for being here today. And I know we can only prognosticate so much about what we can, you know, what's going to happen 10, 15 years from now, but how much, when you meet with your groups, and I think I'm trying to, Mr. Chandler as well, the rebuild isn't just about the now and two years from now, it's about 10, 15 years from now. And my concern is, we've rebuilt some schools, we've rebuilt middle school and high schools in the past, and even during that process, we've had some community members say, well, why does this school have X and our school doesn't have X? And they may have Y, but they don't have X, and like, well, I'd like to have X. So my concern is, and I'll use a concrete example, I haven't, I don't, right, if I understand correctly, right now, we're not considering building a gym at Cherokee. And that is fine for the now, but I'm just wondering, you know, in a few years, will they be saying, well, why don't we have a gym?
Yeah, let me touch on that and give you two examples.
Because I want this in public, then.
Jim's an excellent example. At last night's meeting, that was a discussion, along with the bus drop-off. The group discussed the option of reducing the bus drop-off and taking that land and turning it over to facilities. It's an ample-sized site, so not necessarily, but they thought, let's consume some of that. But we don't know what's going to happen 20 years from now in education in terms of, will the buses will come back and play, and it won't be a school of choice? So we said, no, we got to keep that future-proofing, that flexibility. The gym's a good example. We know that Hope B&amp;P may have large gyms, and they have very small cafeterias. We have a square footage, we got to work with them. Our goal here is to develop a cafeteria that is either the same cafeteria or same square footage exists today, and then instead of building a gymnasium in that cafeteria, we're going to provide three PE rooms that are designed for physical education, because there are three sections that go into it, and it's going to be adjacent to the multipurpose so that one of Walt's goals in his committee is to be able to assemble 900 people in the cafeteria. So that PE rooms will have an adjacency and be able to open up into the cafeteria and provide a larger space. So we're trying to look at these things globally and take lessons learned in the past and apply it to today.
Okay. Thank you. And that's, you know, if you don't want a gym, that's fine, but I just want to memorialize that this discussion happened, or whatever the situation, not necessarily the gym, any, you know, facility component.
Yeah, and every school will have a different opinion on that.
Yeah.
In this instance, what we heard early on in visioning committee was that they're not really interested in a gym, because that gets, that takes away from PE. All the sports are now happening in there, and they don't get the access to it. But we also say, well, that's your scenario. We want to make sure we provide the space that's flexible for the future.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Board Member Greenberg, any questions?
No, I'm good for now. Thanks.
Wow. Okay. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill, and Orca Winslow.
Thank you very much. Pleasure being here tonight.
Okay. We now move to item 4B, discussion item K8, School Avid, which is Advanced Via Individual Determination Program.
Thank you. As most of you know, this was a program, Avid was a program that we had in SUSD. An alternative was attempted, and we believe that to go back to the original program with all of its training component is more effective to bringing about that advancement. And so I would like to introduce Dr. Hagegot to talk about the discussions and about Avid itself.
Yes, thank you, President Beckman, members of the board, Dr. Kriegerd and Sandra. Today, I have the great pleasure of introducing Mrs. Lindsay Slover, who will be sharing with us about Avid for the district as an option for us to be able to enhance academic performance and provide experiences for our students that will really touch both academic and social-emotional piece. So without any further ado, I'd like to introduce our Principal for Copper Ridge that will be sharing about Avid.
Thank you. Dr. Kriegerd, President Beckman, Governing Board Members, and Sandra, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to present information about the Avid program for the Scottsdale Unified School District. Avid is a program that has existed historically in the Scottsdale School District. We are excited to consider welcoming this quality program into Scottsdale schools, and I look forward to sharing information about the different components today. This image where it says Avid from Crans to College captures the scope of Avid as a program that carries students from kindergarten all the way through high school, ensuring that they are prepared to reach their highest potential as students. First, I would like to share some research-based support of Avid components. This will also help describe the scope of Avid and what it has to offer. One of the main components of Avid is a school-wide use of instructional strategies in specific areas. These are known as WICR, so writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. Specifically in writing, that would mean writing to learn, quick writes, reflections, process writing, and inquiry, questioning techniques, levels of thinking, Socratic seminars, investigations, and questions that guide research. In collaboration, Socratic seminars or philosophical chairs, group activities, peer editing, and service learning. In organization, binders and organizational tools, planners, agendas, SMART goals. tools, planners, agendas, SMART goals, and data tracking for students. And in reading, close reading, note-taking, graphic organizers, vocabulary building, and summarizing, among other things. Now, when we look at these strategies through the lens of what works, you can see that they are all effective strategies. To demonstrate this, I used John Hattie's research in effective instructional strategies. For background, instructional strategies with an effect size of .4 or greater are considered to be effective. And the larger the number, the more impactful the strategy. As you can see, each of the components of WICR are inclusive of strategies that have the desired effect size. In fact, some of the most impactful strategies are represented with WICR. For example, cognitive task analysis, which includes tasks that require significant cognitive activity from students, including problem solving and decision-making. It has an effect size of 1.29. Another effective strategy, self-reported grades, in which students set rigorous academic goals for themselves or they predict what they hope to get on a test that they're taking, has an effect size of 1.33. So many of these strategies are some of the most effective that John Hattie's research has shown us. Now that we know what Avid entails, effective, high-impact strategies, I'd like to explain a little bit more about the specifics of Avid. Avid is a school-wide framework for career and college readiness that is built around high expectations. It is designed to reach all students to ensure that they are fully prepared for rigorous high school and college programs. It is not intended to be another thing on our plate or the next new thing. It is designed to blend with school goals to support continuous improvement in a student-centered focus. As the quote says in the graphic, "Avid is a philosophy about high academic expectations and expectations that students will rise to the challenge, especially if they have the support and the skills that they need to do so." Avid is designed, again, to ensure college readiness for all students. At its inception, it was geared towards students who are first-generation college graduates, but has grown to encompass students from all backgrounds. When I talk about Avid, I like to explain that I would have been a great candidate for Avid as a student. Both of my parents are educators with master's degrees and as a, as a child, I was in the gifted program at my school. But I remember I struggled. I didn't have some of the organization and study skills that I needed. And I still remember to this day getting notes sent home that I missed an assignment or my binder was disorganized. And I remember sitting there with my things, trying to organize them and thinking, I don't know how to do this. I, they want me to put these papers in this binder and I just couldn't do it. And it wasn't until graduate school that I had developed enough skills to overcome that. And Avid is something that, had I been exposed to that, I think I would have had the skills I needed to be more successful in school. And it wouldn't have taken until graduate school to figure it out. So to address student needs in the K8 setting, Avid has two sections. One is Avid Elementary for K5, and then the other is Avid Secondary for 68. In Avid Elementary, students are considered emerging as learners and become independent learners by fifth grade. In Avid Secondary, students become independent thinkers, where they think about thinking and learn about learning. To illustrate what Avid looks like, here are examples of the same, of the same type of concept and how it would grow from kindergarten through eighth grade. So in kindergarten, students might be learning inquiry skills by asking questions about the pictures in a story. In second grade, students develop their own questions about a story to have a class discussion. In fourth grade, students would analyze a primary source document to develop a response to a document-based question or DBQ. In sixth grade, students would debate their response to a DBQ and provide a written argument. And in eighth grade, students would engage in a Socratic seminar using primary source documents or text evidence to support their argument or refute the counterargument. And the key here is that Avid is designed to ensure that all students are able to reach this level of rigor and not just students who are in a gifted or an honors class. And one of the things that is very powerful to me about this idea is, as a teacher, one of the classes I taught was Advanced Placement Language and Composition. And when I taught that class, it really hit me of how important it is for students to take classes like that. And not just because it would help their GPA, but because it made me a better thinker as the teacher. And I, I know it provides that same opportunity to students. And what's really powerful about programs like Avid, or Avid specifically, is that it helps ensure that all students are ready to take those classes. I didn't take Advanced Placement in high school because I wasn't, I wasn't organized enough to do that. And it's unfortunate because all students should have the access to do that and all students should be ready to do that when they go to high school. And Avid is a program that helps ensure that all of the students are in fact, ready and prepared. So in an Avid school, the Avid site team and school leadership work together to support instruction, systems, leadership, and culture. The Avid site team, which is composed of teacher leaders and administration, work together to ensure all teachers on campus have quality professional development and a culture of achievement. I would point out that collective teacher efficacy, which Avid supports, has a very high effect size of 1.57. In the next title, I will review information about Avid Elementary. First, I'll share with you the image of an Avid Elementary that has been translated into student-friendly language. So instead of achievement via individual determination, we have, which is the acronym for Avid, you have moving up through your own hard work. And I borrowed that from an Avid elementary school. It's a great growth mindset to help students be set up for success beginning in elementary school. In an Avid elementary school, there are four main components. Student success skills, encompassing communication skills, self-advocacy skills, and study skills. Organizational skills, both mental and physical. Students are given organizational tools such as time management, goal-setting, and note-taking. There are WICR lessons, which emphasize instruction in writing to learn, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading to learn in all content areas. And last, there are partnerships. And those are partnerships among students, classrooms, grade levels, schools, feeder patterns, families, and communities. Perhaps the most exciting component is the partnerships that are developed between students and classrooms and communities because it provides an incredibly strong network for students and a strong environment for success. Avid Secondary includes the components for, of WICR in all classes with an academic elective course for selected students. The criteria for students in the Avid elective vary depending on student population and need, but the goal is consistent, support for all students. Students are selected for the Avid elective based on student and parent interest, as well as other criteria or characteristics. For example, students who have strong academic skills but need collaboration skills would be good candidates for the Avid elective. Students with strong collaboration skills who need organizational support, also a good candidate. Or a student with strong academic skills who maybe needs a little bit of motivation for success. So all different types of students can benefit from the Avid elective. And that's one of the things that schools would work with their site team to develop. What is especially powerful about the Avid elective is that it helps students work with each other as peers to develop and support their own learning. Where one student is strong, another student has a need. In the Avid elective, they work together to make each other even better. In the Avid, the Avid elective focuses on three components. College readiness, which includes team building, guest speakers, and field trips to college campuses. I did resist the urge to make the U of A logo bigger than the other ones. Study skills and organizational support are another component. And that's the support with the Avid binder and organization, review of note-taking strategies, and instruction on how to use an agenda effectively. And last, tutorials. So Avid-trained tutors, which can include peer tutors or volunteers, provide support to students as they investigate areas of need in academics. And we were able to see the tutorial on one of our site visits and it was really neat to see students working together to figure out their point of confusion and strategize and teach each other how to work through that. And it built so many great skills and was really neat to see. The goal here, again, with the elective is to, that ensure that students promote to high school and beyond with the preparation they need to go to the college of their choice and of their potential. The Avid program does come with a yearly cost and that cost, with that cost, schools receive resources and training. The cost includes an annual membership, annual professional development, and a one-time library purchase. The total for year one for a K8 is approximately $15,339 to $20,339. For an elementary school, it is $9,020 to $14,020. Subsequent years would not include the library purchase of $5,745 for a K8 and $995 for an elementary. With the cost of the program, schools receive a library of materials for grades K8 or K5, depending, and resources including Avid weekly readers for all grade levels, and access to the Avid website for lesson or unit plans or ideas or ways to work with students. Also, the training and professional development includes yearly training for the admin and site team and modules of professional development used to train staff. And so what ends up happening is that as more staff get trained and they trained other, train other staff members, everyone works together to increase their own learning. And those modules are a part of the cost of Avid. The last piece is support via walkthroughs and coaching and feedback from the Avid team as well. So specific to Copper Ridge, our journey began, with Avid began very early this year with a conversation between Dr. Hagegot and myself. She had noticed that Copper Ridge had some of the Avid components with strong inquiry, collaboration, and reading programs. And that is where the journey began for us. Following that, we had a meeting with the Avid team in October to get additional information. I spoke with my staff in October after that meeting to present information to them. We went on a site visit to Newell Barney Middle School in Queen Creek, which you see two artifacts from. One is an example from their tutorial and the other is a, one of the lesson plan templates that was posted on the door for visitors to see. After that, it included an Avid presentation at our PTO meeting and our national conference visit with Dr. Hagegot in December. Next, we presented to our staff and had a follow-up PTO presentation meeting in January and our teacher team meetings recently in February. One of the, and both of the pictures we saw, it was great to see at the school that no matter which classroom you went into, they didn't all look the same, but each had components that were the same throughout. So a math class would have similar organizational or lesson components to a science class. And it was great to see that consistency throughout grade levels and throughout classrooms as well. For our implementation plan, we are early adopters at Copper Ridge. And so here is what we would be looking at for the next four years. Year one would be a school-wide focus on organization, which would include agendas and binders or electronic binders, college pride, and professional development, as well as a middle school elective. And the college pride is already part of our vision at Copper Ridge. And so that is not necessarily a huge step for us and it's one that we're very excited about. Year two, it would be further development of the WICR strategies, including accountability and feedback following, and continued professional development. In year three, one of the things that you can do with Avid is become a demonstration school. And to be a demonstration school, you have to be strong in all components of Avid and student achievement. And you then become a destination where other schools come to look and see what you're doing. Also, in year four, you can pursue becoming a school of distinction. And a school of distinction for Avid is awarded to the top 3% of schools that demonstrate not only excellence in Avid, but excellence in student achievement. And it's something that we think that we could do. And it would not only highlight the good things that we're doing, but it would make sure that our students are receiving a top-notch education every day in every grade. In the Scottsdale Unified School District, there are currently two other schools who are looking at Avid. Both Hookam and Yavapai are currently in the exploration stage and have both participated in a site visit to Porter Elementary School in Mesa. They also plan on pursuing Avid training through the Summer Institute or the Avid PATH training, which is local. As a district, we hope to see further exploration and possible expansion as well. Throughout our journey with Avid, we have discussed the question of why Avid? Is that going to be the right program for us? And to answer, there are a few key points. One is that Avid aligns with district core values of success for all students. Second, Avid is time and research proven to work for all students. And last, it is not something else on our plate, but becomes the plate on which we build strong, lasting student-centered school programs. And to us, that means that we are looking at a program that would be very successful for our students and would ensure that they are able to do whatever it is they want to do in high school, college, and beyond. With that, I will conclude my presentation and am open to any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions? Board Member Perleberg?
I'll start off because I might be the only board member who remembers Avid. You guys might remember Avid back in the day. So pulling on my memory of the time when I first got on the governing board, I remember a lot of conversations around how Avid just was not what it was supposed to be at that time. So knowing that that can definitely happen, the program, you know, fidelity of the program can possibly erode. I guess I have several questions. And when you define an Avid site team, like let's say just on elementary, is that a group of 10, five teachers, 10 teachers?
It depends on the size of the school. And Dr. Hagegot is an Avid, former Avid principal, but in my case, it would be a team of anywhere from five to eight teachers across different grade levels, as well as site administration.
Okay. So is it, you have PD time, that they both have training with, with your organization?
Correct.
Then they would also need dedicated PD time with the entire staff? Is that correct?
Yes, Board Member Perleberg, thank you for asking that. Yes, it starts at the Summer Institute or the PATH training, but as leadership, as principals, it is key that it continues throughout the year. As many of these concepts are an introduction and then to bring the depth that it requires so that it is implemented with fidelity and you get the outcomes that are desirable for us, it needs to be ongoing.
So, so I'm just trying to picture then, you have your site team, they have professional development over the summer. Is that voluntary or is that paid?
That is something that they attend as part of their professional development. It's not paid, but they earn those skillset knowledge and the credit, yes.
And then during the school year, when they're at their sites and the idea is how to expand to the entire staff, you know, this PD, is that something that's held like once a month with all teachers and those are, is that?
The model can vary depending on what's available at the time. The way that I've seen it done very effectively is having time during staff meetings for professional development so that it is ongoing. And depending on other funds, in our case, we had Title I funds, but there is results-based funds as well. There would be paid opportunities for teachers to be able to attend either after-school sessions or at sometimes even Saturday sessions.
Okay. All right. Appreciate that. And then I think my last question, and then other board members jump in, is in, at the, oh, high school level, there's always a fight of elective priorities for students, you know, Spanish or PE or band or, you know, all that. How, how are these students guided to those who, we feel Avid elective would be very, very helpful, but they would much rather take a different elective? Who would be kind of responsible to help guide the right types of students in that elective and help them balance the priorities of?
I would say on, on my campus, just in talking with parents and making them aware of what the program entails, I think we're going to, we'll have more than enough students who are interested in the program, just based on, on my experience talking with students and parents. But I think, and when we went to visit Newell Barney and we talked to them about how they do the program, they said they have a mix of recruiting students and then they have other students who just apply and who are interested. But once they realize how great it is and how much they're getting out of it and how much of a family atmosphere it is. much of a family atmosphere it is, that they really don't have a lot of a problem filling the elective, and it becomes one of the preferred electives for students.
Okay. And is it for one year?
They could, they can do it for one year, and I believe Dr. Hagegut...
It can be ongoing, to the point where depending on how we build it, the school that I served was able to take the students from the seventh and eighth grade all the way through twelfth grade as part of this Avid elective. We were able to feed into a school that continued Avid as an option for students to have the support and guidance that they needed.
Okay. All right.
But at this, but at this point, we are not looking at high school. The introduction is at the elementary and K-8 level.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Board Member Kravitz?
So, Avid was previously, if I'm not mistaken, at Coronado, Ingleside, and possibly Arcadia.
It was at Mojave, too.
It was at Mojave, too. Do we have any data on students that went through the program? How many, you know, what the outcomes were in middle school? How many went on to use, to continue in high school? How many students who went through the program in high school? What their graduation rates were, and what their matriculation rates were at community college, a four-year college, or a technical school? Because I thought that's kind of like the focus to drive to higher education. And how many students participated at the middle school level and the high school level? Because if I'm understanding correctly, the elementary level, it's school-wide, it's more of a methodology?
It's a framework. So, and all students get exposure to the WICHER strategies, whether they're in kindergarten or in eighth grade, and everyone in between has that same access. And then in middle school, students also who were selected or applied for the elective also have that additional support. So even if they're not involved in the elective, they still would be getting access to those strategies, and they're not isolated to just the elective. When we were at Newell Barney, you saw in the elective, yes, it was very focused on those specific things, the tutorials, the team building, the college focus, but when you went into other classrooms, you still saw some of those similar strategies used, but they were more incorporated with the curriculum that the teachers and students were using.
So then, at the, and again, just so I can be clear, at the middle school level, every student would take that elective?
Not necessarily. At one of the, at the school we toured, they had all sixth-grade students rotate through the elective, so that helped with their recruiting. And then they had the selected group of, let's say, twenty-five in seventh grade and eighth grade, who were in the elective officially. That's the way that they ran it.
So how will students be selected for the elective? Is it they self-select, or they are chosen for the elective?
I see it being most successful where there's an opportunity for both, where there are students who apply for the elective, but then also students where it's a conversation with their parents and the student saying, "You've got fantastic collaboration skills. We want to work on some of those study skills, and we really like you to take this elective." And so, in talking with other schools who have implemented Avid, they have a similar approach to it, and I think that approach would work at my school as well.
And Board Member Kravitz, it is by application as well? So students hold a high commitment as they come into it, because there are just certain elements that they need to meet as they continue through the elective?
And you're talking about at the middle school?
At the middle school and the high school, yes.
I'd also then like to know what percentage of students who sign up for Avid in the sixth grade continue with it through eighth grade, and then on through high school. But what's not clear to me is, how is this program at the elementary level, how is it different than, not even a program, but just an elementary school that has effective teachers in the classroom?
I would say that it, when you look at examples of elementary schools that are using Avid, you see a much more systematic approach that's much more consistent, so that what you see, those effective strategies you see in kindergarten, have some of, have those same components in first grade, in second grade, and third grade, so that students don't just show up in middle school able to complete an agenda perfectly, they learn that starting in kindergarten. Granted, they don't do an agenda in kindergarten, it might be that they checkmark that they did their homework, or they write something down. So you're taking these strategies that, in kindergarten, gradually building on them. And the key to me is the consistency of them, and the way that they, they all fit into the same framework. And that's why it's not meant to be the next new thing, it's meant to incorporate what is already being done, but to really bolster what teachers are doing by adding that consistency that doesn't vary by grade level, so that it continues to build on each other until they reach eighth grade and move on to high school.
I guess I'm just having difficulty wrapping my head around Avid in the elementary school, because my kids had a really good elementary school program with excellent teachers, and they, yay for me, and yay for my kids, but I'm just trying to see how this program is going to do something more than effective teaching and learning, and I don't understand, if that's what's going on in our classrooms now, what, what this will bring to the table. So I'd like some, you know, not necessarily today, but just some more concrete examples of what Avid looks like in an elementary setting.
I think, I think one of the, one of the differences is that this is a lot about teaching skills for kids to use, as opposed to other avenues that we have and other emphases that we have on working with teachers to improve their instructional skills. So this is not about students learning the content as much as organizing that content and organizing their learning. So one, I have heard for, I don't know, forty years, or whatever, where's, where's the study skills component? Some schools do it pretty well, some teachers do it pretty well, teaching it. This provides a framework for a whole school that creates, as Lindsay has said, the consistency across, that every kid knows, every student learns and knows how to use the notebook. They learn, they learn note-taking skills, and so it goes across, so you don't have hit and miss depending on the emphasis of the teacher. Yes, in a perfect world, every teacher would be doing everything.
Well, and I'm not arguing with you, but I'm just saying, in a, in a perfect world, there'd be collaboration among the teachers, among, during professional development time, where they could be sharing best practices in terms of study skills. So that's, I mean, that's what I've been hearing, that we should be doing, and now we're looking, well, let's, you know, plug in a program. So that's where my thinking is right now. Again, I would like to see some more concrete examples of Avid in an elementary school setting, and how that's different with the effective teaching that's going on in our elementary schools.
I think it augments the successful teaching, because the students have that framework and the consistency in how they're trained. A lot of teachers would also tell you that it's really difficult as the kids get older to go back and start teaching them some study skills when they have so much content that they're supposed to cover, and that that's difficult, whereas if this is built into the program, into the school from kindergarten through eighth grade, then it's scaffolded, number one, and then secondly, it's continually reinforced, but not have to be taught all over to the whole, at the whole grade level.
Board Member Perleberg?
If I can jump in, because I think, Board Member Kravitz, I kind of have that same question in mind, is hearing, hearing the concepts, of course it sounds good, teaching our kids to be better students and organized, but trying to wrap our brains about the reality of the delivery system, and then how it actually looks in our campuses, having it seen, being very watered down, and not really actually what it was supposed to be in the past, is trying to understand, so, especially at the elementary level, if that's what we're looking at, how, how are the teachers, and when are they being taught in professional development to be consistently trained in this structure? And then how is it getting to all the students? I guess I'm just having a struggle to see, where is that dedicated time? Or is it simply training our teachers through a site team, so that within their daily, everyday instruction, they're doing it, which is kind of, or Board Member Kravitz's point, I mean, this is just all about strong teachers. So is like, I guess I'm trying to picture, is this just really a professional development program for our elementary school teachers?
It's, it's all of it. It's, you've asked the perfect questions, but it's all of it, what it does, it's, it really packages things to where it's easily understood. I've lived all the questions that you've asked, and so what happens is, as the site leader along with your site team, you hold a lot of the practices that you are committed to, to a high accountability level, and so you have students involved, you have teachers involved, and coming in and checking in the classroom, you have an Avid coordinator, as well as your Avid elective teacher, where this is not just a conversation, this is what we expect to see within the administration, within the teacher-to-teacher, and students speak Avid. And so I think the best way that one can feel it is by being a part of it. I come from a demonstration school, and so to be able to see the students be the ones that are leading their learning through Socratic seminars, where the teacher becomes the facilitator, and while, yes, we could all wish that this is what was going on in every single classroom in our entire district, it takes a lot of commitment and a lot of accountability from adults and from kids to be able to achieve the level that we are talking about right here at the meeting. So it happens through professional development, but I think bigger than that, it's landing it, being able to see the strategies that you commit to. You don't commit to all strategies the same quarter. We started with organization, and students would be the ones that would come in and check each other's binders, and be able to highlight what was needed. So it becomes a part of the culture, and it just becomes something that it really yields high achievement, and for us, it was really important to have that accessibility for students to be able to reach those higher levels. At the elementary, what it does is it gives that foundation, so that when they come to the secondary levels, they're prepared to take the challenges of learning, and not just in high school, but college and beyond. We find a lot of our college students that struggle because they don't know how to be learners, they don't have those study skills, and so they get frustrated. In an avid culture, you don't let each other sink, you just continue to work. Many students will say the word "family" because they feel like there's this family holding them up together, when they may not be feeling strong enough to hold themselves up, regardless of what their area is. So again, there's a lot of professional development, but ultimately, it's that fidelity, because if you do get more on the loose side, it becomes more challenging to really see the difference between what these Avid strategies bring and what a school without.
We need to take a recess. Board Member Greenberg somehow lost his connection, so we need to take a recess for...
For them to reconnect.
Reconnect, and then we will...
Oh, thank you.
We can meet. Okay, we are reconnecting at 4:10. So I have a question for you, as well as kind of a comment. I, too, have a question about what it looks like at the elementary level, and then, I had a daughter in Avid, in sixth grade at Mojave. So one of the things I hope we continue to do, because I am a big fan, if it's done correctly, and that critical piece for me is the key training and the professional development.
Yes.
Because I've had, someone else that was in another district, had a different experience than I did, and I think I had someone that was trained teaching my daughter in this. So what, my first question is, what does it look like at the elementary level? Because I know in sixth grade, when my daughter was in it, she had it for a period, a class period. So much, and I think this is maybe what you two were asking as well, is it something that's just done in the daily instruction with the elementary school teachers, or is there a specific time dedicated to it? So that's the question. And then my kind of statement, if you will, is, yes, I am a big fan, because I had the experience, and they wouldn't care, this is a general statement, of having twins that went through our elementary schools with the same teachers, and one of them got the organizational skills, and they had the same grades, and the other one didn't. And so if we had maybe reinforced it at that earlier level, we, and then we had something wonderful that we did back then, is we had the fifth-grade teachers that would send a note home at the end of the year, saying to the parents, "You may want to consider this program." And it drove a communication to where we would go then discuss with the fifth-grade teachers, what is this? Why would you suggest my daughter or son do this? And then it kind of transitioned that way, which was fabulous. But have, if we would have had it at the K-5 level, maybe the one daughter that was recommended to go into Avid in the sixth grade level would have picked up those skills along the way, and we wouldn't be doubling back to learn Cornell notes, and to learn those things that are taught. But what does it look like at the K-5 level? Like, how is it done on a daily basis?
I think that's a great question. And when I was working with my elementary teachers, they often had the same question of, "We get it, we like it, but what does it look like on a day-to-day basis?" And I think it's a mixture of both things, where there is direct instruction in things like filling out an agenda, or organizing, or Cornell notes, but also those other strategies become a part of how they do things every day. In talking with my elementary teachers, what we came up with, as we're discussing, is that if you think of math, teachers can come in, if they know their content, they can come in and do, and teach a math lesson. However, if they have a lesson plan that is the same as their teammates, and has some of those same components, and it's been processed and discussed, and they've received professional development in that math concept, it's likely that that's going to go a lot better than them just teaching the content that they know. And that's one of the definitions that my elementary teachers and I arrived at, as we discussed that same thing, of what does it look like at elementary? And it's really that consistency throughout grade levels and within classrooms, that it's not just, if you have the best third-grade teacher, you're going to get those components, that you're going to get those components in every class and every grade level. As far as the professional development goes, in talking with sites that have been successful with Avid, I think it works similarly to how we offer professional development now, in that our site team is trained in different modules and different strands, and then they come back during normal professional development time, whether that's at a staff meeting, or an early release day, and they then train other groups of teachers. And what you get with the resources from Avid are not only the training over the summer, but additional modules that can be taught throughout the school year, like Dr. Hagegut said, either on a Saturday, or some of them are even virtual now, or at professional development during early release time, Staff Development Day, and so all of that PD centers around these same concepts. So you're not reinventing the wheel year after year to decide where you're going to go to increase student achievement, you have a framework that you are using that stays consistent year after year.
Thank you. Board Member Greenberg, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Any other questions? Board Member Beckham?
I'm just going to kind of thank you so much for the, for discussion. I'm going to follow up with the questions, because I had the same questions that everybody else has had up here. So these are still the beginning stages, so that what I would ask is, if you would go back and get the feedback from the SUSD schools, find out what worked, what didn't, what needed improvement, so that if there wasn't fidelity there, what could have been done to have gained that fidelity? Like to know what their objectives were, and how they measured their results? If it, if it was great, and this is what happened, or if, you know, we could have done better here, and this is why? I think that that would be really helpful for any program that we do in this district. I, I'm breaking it down into two areas, because I do know, I did reach out to talk to somebody who had experience in at Ingleside, and one of the things that they had mentioned, so it's a, it's a general question I have, is that it was an elective, it was an application process. So you're going to be, what happens if all of the students want to take it? Do we have the funding to be able to do that? Do we have the time and the space? Or is it limited to twenty-five students per semester? So I'd like to know that for the school, and how that relates to the budget. When you talk about, if it is such an incredible program, why wouldn't we have every child going through it? Because it sounds like it's not just those who recognize that they don't have the organization skills, because at that age, you may not recognize it, but that everybody, no matter whether you are a gifted child, or you are, you know, you struggle in some of your academics, it would benefit you. So is that a possibility? From an elementary standpoint, I also have the same questions. How does that look? How are we going to evaluate whether there is fidelity? Will this become an evaluation piece in the teacher's evaluation, to be assured that they are doing the WICHER? So there's a lot, obviously, to bring, to bring back within the program. Then I guess the big general question, is this the best practice that's out? Then I guess the big general question, is this the best practice that's out there? And is this the practice that we should be using? I guess once you get those other pieces and you kind of see how our community responds and maybe even the Avid program was different by 10 years ago and it's changed, I just don't know. I haven't heard that what's the difference now versus then be part of the program. But we have other programs in the district. We've got the IB program and I'd like to know what those other programs are. Are we just adding another framework because it's Avid and it's a good program? But are there other programs in the district that we're using right now that are very successful? And should we be looking at that program instead of just Avid? So I'd like to get more of an analysis of what we are doing so we're just not adding just another program, especially if it's centered around PD and we realize that we have limited resources and time for our teachers. And if we have teachers coming from a different school that did a different framework and they're already trained in that, now they're just going to be trained in another program and they're very similar. So you're getting the idea there. And I don't know if that makes sense to you or not.
It does.
Or it would be helpful. I would think it would be helpful. But that's up to you to decide and I guess come back to us.
I think those are great ideas.
The other piece that I heard from, and believe me, this is very limited and brief conversation that I had with a parent who's was familiar with Avid at Ingleside, is that yes, they had these great skills, but then they went to the high school and it wasn't implemented there. And they kind of, okay, now I don't have that community you talked about. I don't have that family. I don't have the support. And it was just mentioned that it's not going to be done at the high school. Is that a component that's...
Not in the first year. We're recommending that we start here at the elementary and then that...
Oh, okay. So maybe if that is part of that piece, then that's what we need to know from an analysis standpoint because that is an important component. And there's also a budgetary piece to that. So that should be on your budget, right? And I'd like to see student participation in that budget on the, as I mentioned. And then really just what your objectives are and what the measurable results you're expecting. Because if we can't measure the results, we won't know how successful the program is. So we need to know those up there.
So to address the elective question, one of the things that I think is great about Avid is that even students who don't have the elective still are getting those pieces. They may not get them as concentrated of a format, but they will still have access to those. So it's not the organization, the collaboration, the tutorials, those things are not limited to just the Avid class. A lot of those, or elective, I'm sorry, a lot of those components become part of other classes as well. It's just concentrated in the Avid elective. So even if students don't have the elective, they still do have access to those other strategies that are effective as well.
And maybe that's the component that was missing when it was at our middle schools. Because when I asked about it, it was just the elective. So maybe that's that overlying piece that makes it successful for all students. And your research talking to those other schools, maybe that was the piece that they weren't doing.
Correct. And when we did our site visit, that was the way that it looked. When you went into the tutorial class, which is the elective, you saw those specific components, but you also saw them in other classes. They were just much more concentrated in that elective class. So it's not something that's isolated to only the 25 students in seventh grade who get to be in the elective. Those students get more of it, but all students get some of it. And so that's, that was a component I felt was important as well. And as far as the evaluation and the fidelity to it, I'll let Dr. Hogg get to address that as she's been through that as an Avid principal.
And I'm saying you don't have to do it now because I'm sure you're going to come back. But one piece I would like to just add is how does it relate to the standards? Because you had mentioned the Socratic method. And that's a method if that school's going to take on, that's very maybe different from what they're doing now. And that is, that PD and that training and ongoing training is such a large component. And how does that relate to the standards that we're teaching now?
The standards are content-based and this is student organization-based. So this, these skills help, help the students learn the content and organize the content in their own minds through their note-taking and so forth. But the standards are specific concepts in the content area. So this is completely different.
And for instance, if I might add, and I have a little experience with Avid in the past, being a former Avid coordinator at the high school level, I can tell you that for instance, a Socratic seminar aligns very well to the ELA standards in the speaking and listening. So there are a lot of things that you can practice when doing the Socratic seminar or doing note-taking. There's a number of ways to embed and align those standards with them.
Any further questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We are moving on to discussion item 4C, proposed revisions and/or adoption of governing board policies.
Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Precard and everyone. I have a few policies for a first read for your consideration this afternoon. Most of the policies that I'm going to show you, I worked with our PIO, Amy Bolton. She came to me and said, "I'd like to see us update these policies that are related to social media and advertising." And then one other policy that we've just needed to update for a little while is our policy regarding animals in schools. So I will start with the advertising and social media policies. Let's see what order I have these in for you here. We'll start with KHB, advertising in schools. This is a policy that we do currently have and we're just recommending some changes to it, a little update. Under the advertising on district vehicles, we are recommending deleting these three bullet points because we're moving them to, sorry, not deleting, moving those to the end of the section, sorry. First three bullet points, that's those. Sorry, we are moving these, but I'm not finding it here in this version. I'll come back to that. But we are also recommending adding this language here. "The district reserves the right to refuse any advertising or sponsorship that would otherwise be inappropriate with respect to the district's values, beliefs, core purpose, and mission as determined by the superintendent or superintendent's designee." And then, there they are. We moved those three bullet points right here. Advertising on buses. We also added this language here in blue that we can sell space on the exterior of the buses, which has been true and is in our separate policy that I'll talk about in a minute that we're recommending deleting because it's going to be redundant. This one was just changed because that's not the title of the person in charge of So any questions on those changes in KHB before I move to the next? Okay.
Can I, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, I forgot you were there.
I feel, I feel like I'm kind of big brother over here watching all you guys through YouTube. Yeah, just a kind of a quick question about that. At the bottom where it says, "The district reserves the right to refuse any advertising or sponsorship that would be inappropriate with the values, beliefs, or core purpose of SUSD," is that, have we, I asked it earlier, but I kind of weighed the lesson, has this been made sure that it to his First Amendment? I mean, is this allowable? I mean, because it seems pretty, pretty loose what our values are. I mean, obviously, I like to think we have good values, but that doesn't mean, you know, this isn't kind of subjective, if that makes sense?
Yes, it does. And thank you for the question. With respect to values, beliefs, core purpose, and mission, those are things that this governing board has either, has worked on in public meetings and some of those things are outlined in our policies. It is true that some of those items need to be updated in our policies. And then we also have another area where we specifically talk about what is acceptable. And some of that is here in the language just preceding that where it talks about not promoting anything that is, that would be illegal for minors such as alcohol, tobacco, and drugs, or gambling, and that it complies with the state sex education policy of abstinence.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Anything else on that one? Okay. So because we put the school bus advertising language into KHB, we are also going to be recommending deletion of the separate policy that says essentially the same thing. This is the very short policy as it exists and you see we've suggested deleting it entirely. And then the, its corresponding regulation, just suggesting deleting it entirely. Any questions about that? So the next one I have is policy KD, which is called Public Information and Communication. It's a little bit small. See if I can zoom out a little. That's a little too much. It's a little better? So in this policy, you'll see it starts out, the superintendent has a responsibility of keeping the public informed. We took out the all-written notices, bulletins, newsletters, et cetera, must be approved prior to release. Ms. Bolton wanted to put this in a different way, kind of the same idea, but in a different way, that individuals designated to speak on the district's behalf at any time are her and her deputy, the superintendent and the governing board. Subject matter experts, including principals and department heads, will be authorized to speak to the media upon invitation by the PIO as needed. And that it will be, that invitation would be extended on a per-inquiry basis, not to be absolute permission to speak on behalf of the district. The language then goes on to talk about media inquiries to be directed to the PIO, that all news releases will be issued as deemed necessary by the PIO, that she will approve news releases prior to distribution. It talks about news briefings and providing background materials and that the PIO should be responsible for those. Also, in the event of an emergency or disaster, that the PIO or her designee would be responsible for media relations in those situations. Any questions about those proposed changes?
Board Member Beckham?
So can you go back up? I was just reading. So it states there, "Subject matter experts, including principals, department managers, will be authorized to speak to the media upon invitation." So we've got the media out at a concert at a school. Does that mean the prince and the journalist says, Principal Jones? I'd like to have your opinion or feedback on this. They cannot give us, they have to say, "No comment." I have to get approval from my PIO officer?
I do not believe that is what she's envisioning, but I'm going to invite her to talk about how she would see that working.
I'd like to make it clear what its intent is.
Good afternoon and thank you for the question. The intent was, behind this is not to preclude anyone from speaking to the media and I realize there'll be those occasions where it happens in the moment. The intent behind this, and in that scenario, if that person is speaking on behalf of the district and it's most convenient to provide comment then, those occasions are fine. I find that those are very rare, though. The intent behind this also is for new employees coming into the district to know what the rules are and to provide some clarity around that. And for certain roles in the district, we wouldn't want those folks to be able to have that absolute permission. So in the instance that you mentioned that, yes, of course, we would want certain level employees to be able to immediately speak to the media when it's appropriate.
So if you're, from what you just said, that's not addressed here because this addresses subject matter experts, principals, department managers, not new employees. So this doesn't help with that. So is that somewhere else down in here that lets new employees know what the rules are? Because that's pretty direct to those individuals.
Right. So unless you're part of those categories, you would not be authorized unless invited?
Okay.
If I, if that language...
I, I, okay. I mean, I understand where you're coming from. I don't know if you're an employee, if that comes across that way. So I still then am confused. I'm a principal, I'm a district manager. When can I talk and when can't I?
The way that it happens in practice is usually, I believe, excuse me, it's been my experience here, that the staff appreciates the intermediary of having the public information officer. But again, we don't want to preclude, this isn't to prevent folks from talking to the media, but it's also to give the chance to get some counsel and some guidance if folks aren't used to dealing with the media. So this is intended to protect the employee and of course, the district. And then we don't require employees to speak to the media. So there are cases where employees feel uncomfortable or wish to decline speaking to the media and then of course, that would flow to me. So this policy is intended to provide that clarity. As far as I understood, there wasn't anything in place prior.
So I would be interested, since this is just the discussion beginning, to hear back from principals and how they interpret that so that they understand that. I'm just looking for clarity on this line, trying to get to there. So the next one, media inquiries, whether verbal or written, are to be directed to the PIO, so will evaluate the request, provide an answer. So that almost seems like you are talking to the media outlets. They are not your employees who would see this. So I just want to make sure that, or are you saying to your employees, if you're approached, direct everything? I think then we need that wording to be that way. So that if this may be to the whole employee group, but it doesn't read that way. So I just want to make sure the work's clear.
It does, it does to me, though. A media inquiry comes in, I've known, I know to direct it to the PIO.
Well, you're the superintendent.
We get, yeah, but we still, and if I were, and when I was a principal, if someone from the press called me, and especially if there was a particularly controversial or high-impact situation going on, then I would want the PIO to handle that and would also be very, as Amy said, thankful that I didn't have to deal with that. But knowing that in policy, when those requests come in, that not only can we, but we are directed to send it to the PIO to give the official response.
I would agree. I just, I would agree. I just think it needs to be a little bit clearer for who you're addressing in this point.
Anything else on this policy?
Nope.
The next one I'd like to show you is policy GBEF. And this is a policy that we do not currently have. That's why it's all blue. Most of this, the dark blue, is an ASBA recommendation. Most of this, the dark blue, is an ASBA recommendation, Arizona School Boards Association. I'm going to try to zoom that in a little bit. And we updated it, you know, Instagram was not in there. We took out the reference to BlackBerries. So this policy tells our staff what they can and should do when it comes to using digital communications and electronic devices when you're speaking on behalf of the district and gives some guidance about personal use within the parameters as Board Member Greenberg mentioned, ensures that we're respecting First Amendment rights of free speech for, for employees to make comments as they want in the public when they're not speaking on behalf of the district. I did provide you with this policy in advance. Do you have any particular questions? Would you like me to go through each of the sections? I don't want to read it to you.
Welcome.
Board member Beckham?
Are there any that need to be highlighted? That people would need to hear publicly that are really kind of important and, or seem to be the ones that stand out that are misused the most and therefore need to be highlighted?
Thank you for the question. I'm really excited about this policy because we don't have anything in place. So I think what this does is provide some clear guidelines. And when I speak with employees in orientation, I give them this advice, but now just having it in policy gives it a, that much more structure and it's something we can point back to. And I would say again, just to call your attention to, this also helps us in communications because we are using social media on behalf of the district. So this provides guidelines for me and my staff. So we're using social media responsibly on behalf of the district. So just to point out that we're subject to these as well, especially because we have access to all the accounts and we're held by these rules.
And from a legal perspective, the most important parts to me are that employees understand that they do have a free speech right to make comments under the First Amendment, even to criticize the district and the board. People have a First Amendment right to talk about what's considered a matter of public concern in that regard. And so this policy, I want our employees to know, is not intended to restrict that in the least. And the other area that we highlighted in, in that regard is that it's also not intended to restrict employees' right to, to talk about working conditions. Those are two very important things that employees have the right to talk about. And this policy is trying to give them guidelines about being smart about communication, but also once, I want to point out that it's not intended to restrict those rights that are very important.
I do, I do think there's another letter C up there I think is also important. This is an area of, of concern for sometime, that staff members shall only use district-controlled and approved technologies when communicating with students and parents. And I, I think that's a safeguard for our parents, but also following this policy would help protect teachers and, and other employees as well when they're communicating with students.
And I, I'm going to guess here, that means no personal devices?
Right.
Should the words be up there? That means no personal devices? Just to be really clear? Is that helpful?
Right.
I know it, I know it sounds redundant, but may, well, sometimes...
My, my, my personal phone is also the district-approved technology phone.
Yeah, I could see a teacher using the SUSD email on their personal phone. I think we kind of all do that. So I didn't understand that.
That's true. So do we need to state that that, as long as your personal phone is used for district business? I mean, this is where, this is why we have policies, right? Because you have these interpretations that can be different. So maybe that's something to be looked at, is can it be still not understood and people will still make mistakes because they didn't understand it?
In my mind, that's more of a training and communication issue. And thank you, Dr. Krieger, for pointing that out. That is an area that I am excited about adding this policy because I get that question all the time about, you know, hey, you know, is it okay for the coach to text, you know, his players or whatever? And while that's normally innocent and fine, it can lead us into areas where we're getting into trouble. And so I would work with Dr. Bowman on what's the best way to communicate this policy to our employees and let them ask questions. I'm a big fan of live training where people can talk to you and that. I think the language is, you know, district-controlled and approved technologies.
Broad enough.
Sorry?
Is broad enough that it encompasses everything because it's the policy and then it really comes down to our training procedures. Is there anything in the policy that says we will provide training and procedures through our HR department?
Not in this particular policy, no.
Board member Perleberg?
Kind of speaking of that. Training procedures, the real world that we now live in. It's always come up, the question of, and correct me if I'm wrong, if there is language in here or if it is just a matter of training. When you have teachers, anyway, principals, anyone, that, you know, they have their personal Facebook page or their personal social media page. I would never think it's best practice that they friend or whatever students that are currently within our school district, just crossing that personal line. If you have a site set up as your, as, I'm this teacher and that's how you communicate. I get it. But the personal, is that train, if it's not in that policy, is it part of the training and procedures for our staff? You know, do not friend on your personal Facebook page, one of your students or...
Yeah, that, that is a training piece and best practices piece, as you said. I agree, it's not a good idea, especially for current students, you know, and this, this policy says communicate with your students and parents through district means. You know, I would take that to be, don't friend your current students on Facebook.
Yeah. Or even if, you had them as a freshman, but now they're a senior, but they're still in SUSD.
At school, yes.
Still not appropriate.
And still a minor.
And still a minor.
Some of those important distinctions.
Yeah.
Anything else on this policy?
Board member Greenberg? Just kind of, just very quickly kind of following up on that. So do, I, I don't know what the situation is. Do teachers, are teachers provided a phone or something by the district or do teachers use their own, their own phone? Only because, you know, when we say shall not, district-owned or provide a technology that, I'm just not, I just want to be clear, what technologies do we actually provide to, to teachers?
They have, they have district-provided laptops, but not, but not phones. But if they use, use their phone, as was mentioned, to communicate on, on the district email system, then, then that would, that would qualify because that's something that we have, have some control of and can track if necessary.
The only teachers that have a school district-issued phone are Scottsdale online teachers because they do not have a classroom. So those teachers do utilize a district phone because that's how they talk to students and parents.
So, so just out of curiosity, with this bullet point E, shall not use district-owned or provide technology, are, are these phones themselves, are these phones or laptops provided to staff? Are they considered technology? Only because if I have, you know, if I'm given a, at my previous work or at my current work, if, you know, I have my work computer, sure, but I might access Facebook for personal reasons and maybe I post something that says, you know, I support policy X or I, you know, I, I do not support policy X. I'm using technology, I would think a computer falls within that definition or am I wrong?
Using, using a district computer to access your personal Facebook page would, regardless of the political cause or whatever, I, I would think would be something that is not allowed.
Okay.
And that, that particular subsection is of course, with respect to 15, ARS 15511 about not using district resources to influence the outcome of an election.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on this one? Okay. What do we have left here? I think we've done everything except animals in schools. So animals in schools. This policy needs to be updated to align with the law. The, the language you see in red lined out here talks about asking service animals, laminated ID card may be requested for verification. We actually are not allowed to ask that. And I've been providing this information to employees for a while, but it's just been a while since we've been able to get this policy updated. So I get the question quite a bit and I say, don't look at that policy, listen to me. So I'm bringing this to you for that reason. It defines what a service animal is, consistent with the statute, and states that we will not discriminate against anyone who needs a service animal to come onto our campus. We are allowed to ask a couple of questions about service animals. That is whether it's needed to help with a disability and what is it trained to do. People who use service animals, and this includes therapy animals, are required to clean up after the animal and take care of it and we can't do that for them or have others, including students, doing that. The other thing that sometimes comes up with this policy is what if one student needs it and another's allergic? We work through those issues because a student's entitled to have their service animal and a student's entitled to not have something that's causing allergy issues. So we've worked through those on a case-by-case basis to protect the rights and needs of both students in those situations. So I'll, any questions on this particular policy?
Board member Beckham?
How is it termed at the beginning? Is it just animals in school?
Yes, that's what it's called.
And so does this, I remember wanting to bring an animal, you know, it was dog day or something and then all of a sudden, no animals were allowed. So is this the policy that you would go to to find out if you could bring your animal, your pet in for show and tell or, you know, if you were studying birds and you had a bird at home, can you bring in your bird? Is this the policy or not?
So the regulation that goes with this policy, I'm not ready to show you yet, but it's the regulation that talks about those kinds of things. Can we have a class pet or can we bring in a dog for dog day or, or that kind of thing? I want to do a little bit more talking to our employees about what's happening, what they need before we talk about updating that. There are some basic rules in there and I'll get calls about, you know, reptiles or, you know, the, I can't remember the guy's name. He might be called the snake man. There's, there's people like that that come every year and it's fun for the kids.
Mr. Bosnick.
What was that?
Mr. Bosnick, I believe his name is.
Oh, wow. We don't want to not have that for, but, but we also want to be careful that kids aren't being endangered and the animals aren't being endangered. So I will bring that back to you, once I've had a little more communication with the staff about that one. Any other questions on this policy? Okay. It sounds to me like I can bring this back on consent. Are there any that need for more discussion than that? Okay.
Just that first one, I would like to know if, if the language, after you consider it, if it needs to be changed at all in the first one.
Okay. All right, thank you. We have your face.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall.
Thank you.
Moving to item five, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Board member Perleberg makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board member Kravitz, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a discussion item.
Okay. You want to pull an item?
Vote.
On the consent agenda?
Well, we were going to be voting for the consent agenda. It was first, second, so I wanted the discussion and then I thought we'd vote on it. So I guess I could have pulled it instead.
Consent agenda is all at the same time. Consent is consent. It's like, oh.
Okay, then I would like to pull B.
Okay. Board member Beckham moves to pull, or would like to pull consent agenda item B, approval architectural design services for safety and security upgrades for the front offices, BWS architects. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding item B, approval architectural design services for safety, security upgrades for the front offices?
So moved.
All right, so moved.
Board member Perleberg makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Board member Kravitz, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Okay. Board member Beckham asks the consent agenda item B be pulled. Board member Beckham?
I just wanted to, but that's okay, Mr. Gadd can answer. I just wanted to clarify what this was because there's no dollar amount attached to it as is, yet we were given information as to a grouping of schools that were looking at being upgraded and there was a dollar amount provided with that amount. So that there could be some confusion where we actually approving, I think the number's like 3.5 million dollars and no, we're not. And I'll let you go ahead and clarify what this exactly is that we're approving today.
Yes. Madam President, members of the board. This is a, an action item that relates only to the selection of the architect. Once we have those plans ready and we do a contractor selection process, we will be bringing back to the board the award of any construction associated with the offices. So we're here because it's over a hundred thousand dollars worth of services with this particular architect for these particular projects. Typically, those will always be followed by a separate board action relative to the, the person who's actually going to do the work.
Any other questions? Okay. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda item 5B, architectural design services for safety and security upgrades for the front offices, BWS architects. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board member Kravitz, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Okay, we are going to take a short recess. Be back in 10 minutes, five?
Say five.
Five minutes, about 5:00 PM. Thank you. Welcome back. We are reconvening at 5:07 PM and moving into our action items. First one is action item 6A. Do I have any discussion on item 6A, the 2019, 2020 maintenance and operations budget?
Yes, may I first?
Dr. Krieger?
Yes, if I may add, Madam President Beckham, members of the board, I'd like a general comment first and then I'll introduce Mr. Gadd. But the action items tonight, A, B, C, D and E are all items that we need to issue contracts to the teachers tomorrow. The board has said for some time that it's extremely important to issue contracts before spring break and that means tomorrow. So we've answered a lot of questions. I'm sure there are other questions still out there that we want to answer those, but please be mindful of the fact that all of these lead to the ability to issue contracts tomorrow and to compete for the best and brightest. We know there are districts who have already issued contracts. We know there are districts who have already issued contracts, and we really don't want to, because issuing contracts makes people who are thinking about leaving, retiring, resigning, whatever, that's their point where they have to make a decision whether to sign the contract or not. So, that's where we find out a lot about what kind of potential vacancies we have, and what kind of separations we will have. And we need to know the vacancies as soon as possible, so that we can hire the best teachers, and we don't want to be behind all the districts around us. So, I just wanted to lay that out, so that you understand the, not that you wouldn't anyway, but the seriousness of all of these items leading to that desired outcome. So, with that, with that, I was going to introduce Mr. Gadd for A.
No, the third one, when it says MNO, E, B, the third item, that's it.
Yeah, that one.
That's it.
Board Member Kravitz, did you have a question?
I'll wait till after Mr. Gadd's presentation.
And Board Member Greenberg, are you here?
I am.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Madam President, members of the board, the, the over, the PowerPoint that I'm going to briefly go over with you is the same one, for the most part, that you've seen before. This is about the third time, I think. It provides a framework for the district to have the confidence level to proceed and recommend to you the balance of those agenda items that Dr. Krieger just talked about. The dollar magnitude of the remaining items on the agenda are extremely significant, especially the south item. And we need, we feel we need some assurance that what we have put in here as a framework, what we proposed as a framework, is generally acceptable to the board, and that's why it says tentative approval. It is not the final approval. You won't be doing that until June. But at least we get the, you know, we get the concurrence from you that, generally speaking, the increases and decreases that are being proposed are generally acceptable, and that creates a dollar amount of which we then feel comfortable in recommending the remaining agenda items. So, with that, the formula itself that you find on the first couple of three pages does not change from where it has previously been estimated. Still 2% inflation factor, a decrease of 600 in the student count. There's no legislative changes proposed for next year that are included here, although there are relatively few of them being proposed at this point that would have any significance. Those will be obviously taken into account when we ask you to approve the budget finally in June. The first page that you will find that relates to some more information is on this page. It's entitled MNO Increases, and it's the third item down. We had talked to you about reserving all along some money for increases in program salaries, et cetera. That list is here. It totals just short of the $300,000 that we had reserved in prior PowerPoints. It gives you the detail of what's in that number. You talked about Avid this evening, and that's included here, as you can see. So, we've tried to list those things that we knew we needed to reserve some money for, and, and there they are. And we are more than happy to talk to you about any of those, and if there's some of those that you have some concern about, we can, we have plenty of time between now and June in which to deal with that. But it is a component that we intend to proceed with, unless you indicate to us that you would rather talk about that subject at a greater length. The next page that has some changes to it is the administrative, or some clarification, I should say, of, of the administrative reductions that are being proposed in the PowerPoint. Remember, we reserved $500,000. It has now grown to 764,000, excuse me, 746,000, and it still doesn't include two changes that we have made in reducing assistant principals. So, this number will be well above $800,000. That obviously gives us more money that's not assigned than the original $500,000 that was planned. And that is depicted mathematically. See where I'm at here? Going the wrong way. Right here. If you look at the bottom of that particular slide, it says MNO Budget Savings at the top. You see down at the bottom where we've added that differential between 500 and 746, this is $246,000. We added it to the 107 that we already had accumulated through an increased inflation factor. So, we're now up to 354,000 unassigned, and once we add the two assistant principals, I would suspicion we're going to be close to 500,000 of unassigned amount. That is something that the board, before we finalize the budget in June, will need to give us some indication as to how you want to proceed with that item. But it is unassigned at this point. It may grow if legislation is beneficial to the district between now and June. And, and that's possible, I suppose anything's possible. As we move through then the rest of the PowerPoint, the cash control funds that we have proposed using some to balance the budget has not changed, the dollar amount has not changed. I would point out that the Civic Center Fund is higher than it would have been at the end of last year because rentals were being included in the School Plan Fund, rather than in the Civic Center Fund. We made that revenue shift from the School Plan Fund, which is really sale and long-term lease, to the Civic Center Fund, which is the day-to-day rentals. So, that, I think we've now categorized correctly, from an accounting standpoint, where those revenues need to be. And you can see by the amount that we are ultimately using, which is in the far right-hand column, that $2 million, we've been, I believe, fairly conservative with that number, and especially in light of looking at the beginning balances and what the annual revenues are. And we will have, as, as we talked maybe earlier, I know Board Member Kravitz asked, and we are going to be furnishing to you in the April timeframe, next month, the minimums and maximums that we think are appropriate to use as a guide for these cash control funds. And there's also, there's also a second component, which is, what would you apply to budget control funds, like MNO? It's not a cash control fund, it's a budget control fund. How much of that budget should we have left at the end of the year to begin the following year? How much of that budget should be available during the year for contingencies for unforeseen or whatever? So, we will have that for you next month. And I believe, Madam President, members of the board, that pretty much summarizes that MNO budget. Not a lot of change from last time, other than to add some clarification to a couple of the items that were, were not delineated.
Are there any questions? Board Member Kravitz?
When next?
Yeah, I, sorry.
Are you saying by April 16th of our next meeting?
Yes, as a matter of fact, it's even sooner than that, because Dr. Krieger will be distributing a Friday memo, that I will have a draft of that in there, and that will occur probably tomorrow, or, or that week after spring break. And it's a one-page, and it says draft at the top, and it's our starting point with you when we have our discussion in April. So, you'll get an early view of it here within the next week or two. And then, as we move forward, you know, any input you have, we'll try to take into account, and we will have it formally on the agenda. I think the first board meeting in April, April 4th, I believe, something like that.
Board Member Perleberg?
Okay, I know we've all received emails, and I know we're all incredibly supportive of this World Math and Science Academy, so I'll just kind of address that tonight. I look at the program, fiscal year program costs, don't see that listed, you know, I guess there's rumors out there of cuts, and so, how about we clarify? It's not on this.
Thank you for clarifying that. My position all along, from, from the, probably the, I believe the first significant decision that, that I made when coming on board in May was to add a self-contained gifted class at Kiva to feed to the Math Science Academy. That feeder system was very important. It's been, it's been something that, that I have highlighted all along, our support. We have, Dr. Sakos has leveraged funds from a private founder, as well as a foundation, and a private funder, to help with the innovation space at the Math Science Academy. We have worked with Dennis to talk about closing that cage for that, the old locker bay, and then eating area, that's an eyesore in the middle of that campus, to, to promote robotics, and that maker space that we're talking about closing, closing that off. I have, Dennis, I have stated, the first time that started these series of emails was after our student advisory board member, when a, a student from Saguaro, who was on the advisory board, wrote to me and asked me about the Math Science Academy, because one of the teachers is retiring, and they, they hadn't replaced, or we haven't had vacancies to post and transfer and all of those things. And I wrote to her, I'm a strong supporter of that, and we will give all resources necessary to maintain and enhance the Math Science Academy. I have used those same words on, I don't know, five or six different emails that I'm responding to from the parents that have written, written to all of you. This afternoon, Dr. Bowman, Dr. Sakos, and I met with Principal Oxiger, and went over her staffing allocation. We believe there was some misunderstanding of what she could do. Staff was decided upon by looking at some programs, and there's pieces to help those programs, but overall, the high school principals have said, "This is your gross allocation. You use that to staff your school." She didn't know that she had the kind of flexibility that we were telling her she did. And in the end, we said, "You, you can make some moves, but also, if you need more to continue the Math Science Academy, you let us know." We believe she, she was given enough staff to do that, but we're, we're open to fulfilling that promise that I made, that we will use whatever resources necessary to continue and enhance the Math Science Academy. It's a, it's a terrible misunderstanding that has led to a lot of furor, and there was never an intent on anybody's fault, anybody's part, to diminish the staff there, or the, the role that the Math Science Academy plays. I've said, it's a, it's a lighthouse in the middle of our district.
Yes, totally.
And, and it embodies all the things that I truly believe in for our kids and their futures. So, we are absolutely supportive of that program, and we will do everything that we can to make sure that it goes forward as it's supposed to.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Sure, we're all happy to hear it.
Yes. Board Member Greenberg, did you have a question?
Uh, no, that answered it. Thank you.
Board Member Kravitz?
Um, monies for supplemental contractors are in here somewhere? Which line would that be? Is it specific line, or?
The funding for it, we, we've taken all of the salary base amount that's in the current budget.
Okay.
And increased it by 5%, which would include the supplement.
Okay, so, but we're still continuing, I believe you were still requesting some information about some of our supplementals. I know I had requested some information about supplementals. Well, I think you'd asked Mr. Slater for some more information, and I've asked for information about what we pay for different types of activities, so that, that I can still expect to see that.
Well, Board Member Beckham?
I had asked Mr. Gadd that question today, and he actually was able to respond, so maybe it would be nice to go ahead and respond, so Board Member Kravitz will know where she can find it, because it's available.
Okay, I, I'm not sure exactly. I'll respond to what I think the question is.
Tyler has.
We got copies of our supplemental contracts, so I could give you that. You prepared that as from.
Well, it's a little bit different. What Board Member Kravitz, I'm not putting words in your mouth. She's looking at, how much do we pay the positions that we have? And as I understand it, it is on our website at this point in time.
It is.
You can go, it'll say each category, and it gives a corresponding, I believe it's a letter.
It's a letter, a letter, and then that letter corresponds to the.
Certain duties that you would perform in order to.
It corresponds to a particular activity?
Yes.
So, it will tell me if I am a.
Coach.
Coach for underwater basket weaving, this is what? Okay.
Board Member Beckham?
I know you're never supposed to start a statement this way. I'm not trying to be difficult, but we, we've never approved a tentative, tentative budget before. I've only been on for two years, but I asked if there was some policy, if we had, I'm still, we've always approved the issuance of contracts and the salary schedule the past two years without approving a tentative budget, because we, sometimes we may not have even had the budget at the time that we approved them. So, I don't believe that we actually need to have a tentative approval to issue contracts today. I'm hesitant to do a tentative approval, and I'll tell you why. Because I still think that there's a lot of room for some movement in here, and I don't want to give the impression that this is all that there is. I am supportive of the salary increases that you've made. I think that those are reflected in the salary schedules, and we are under the agenda item, for action item, to approve the salary schedule. So, it seems to me that we approve that salary schedule, which means we are approving those salary increases in which you have been able to show that the funds would be available, given the variables or assumptions that we have today. And then the second part of that is that we then approve the issuance of contracts. So, I'm not, I don't, I'd like to know why we really need to tentatively approve the budget when it doesn't appear that we need to.
One of the observations I would make is, much of this budget and the dollar amount that goes to those salary increases comes from this list of budget reductions that's in this PowerPoint. Thirty teachers to start with. So, you know, we, we want to be sure that you're on the same page as we are, that we are going to impact 30 teaching positions, where they're not going to be here next year. And we, we want you to understand and concur with that reduction, because that provides the money, much of the money, for those salary increases. If we issue those contracts, and then find later that the board had no intention, and I don't mean to put, if the board did not have an intention of following through with those kinds of reductions, we've got a whole separate problem, and the problem is almost unfixable, because we have people now with contracts, signed and returned, that we can't reduce. So, that's, and, and most of this adjustment, of course, is going to have to be in the salary category, and in the number of positions, because 90% of this operating budget is salaries and benefits. So, when you're looking for almost $5 million of reductions, and it's all in the salary category, and you change your mind about which positions, or how many positions you are willing to delete for next year, we have a severe budget problem, and, and now a legal obligation of trying to figure out where to go. That's why that tentative approval is there. It's, it's basically an intention of going on record with not a final approval, because that's what it is. But, a strong intention on the board's part to follow through with what we've proposed to you, so that we have that confidence level to proceed with the number of positions that we need to reduce.
So, and I would, I would say that I agree, I've never been in a situation where we've asked for a tentative budget approval. And tentative is the key word. But, given our declining enrollment, given our need for transparency with the public, and to show early on, yes, we are working hard at efficiencies in the district to deal with the declining enrollment, and showing fiscal responsibility, I, I agree with Mr. Gadd, I think it's, it's a, it's a good idea to ask for your tentative approval of the budget. And tentative, to me, means that, that changes can be made, but we understand the repercussions, as he, as he pointed out. If we, if we don't do a tentative approval, we, we would still go forward, but. If we, if we don't do a tentative approval, we, we would still go forward, but we would probably be a, a little more anxious as the spring went on and we were following through with our plans, having not had the, the, that approval for those items from the board.
Board Member Beckham?
So let me understand this, because it hasn't really been presented that succinctly in our past budgets. What I heard was, is that our enrollment has declined, and therefore, through attrition, we are reducing the amount of staff that we have. Now, and I apologize if the number thirty has been put out there before, but I don't remember that that was, not that it's that material, it just makes it a little bit more definite, and that's great, because it provides some transparency. So then my understanding would be that whether we approve it or not today, when we issue contracts, we're issuing thirty less, whatever that number might be, contracts than we would if our enrollment was the same as last year. Is that true statement?
That is generally true, and we want, the, the reason for this being here is we want the board to concur now, when we take this action, which will be very quickly now, that that is a direction you want us to go. That we don't find out three or four weeks from now, that you wanted us to do something different, and you didn't want those thirty positions deleted, and now we have to bring them back, and now we have a severe budget balance problem.
Well, I think that's a communication issue, because I don't feel that it was communicated in, in that way, and that that's what I was voting on. So, and I might be just that, that lone board member that feels that way, so I'm thankful that we had this discussion, so that we can understand that. So, let's just make sure that, since this is, you know, full transparency, so there is going to be that attrition when we issue these contracts. If enrollment starts to come up, we will therefore be then issuing additional contracts to make sure that those classrooms have teachers. Want to make sure that that is said.
And we do, we do also have contingency built into the budget for, there are, there are some cases where a, a class, grade level at a particular school might be really close to breaking into another one, and so we have those contingencies. But I think it's important to, to be reminded that our student-teacher ratios are remaining the same. We staff the schools closer to that top end. We were, we were pretty comfortably staffed for this current school year, and we made a decision early in the year not to collapse classes and combine and do those kinds of things. So we had people hired, and we, we stayed with that. So this year, by staffing them closer to that top end, we were able to save thirty positions. And, and we have some teachers out on surplus, waiting to find out where they're going to go, and that's, those are the ones that we say, through attrition, there will be jobs for them. We are confident in that.
I, I just don't want this tentative approval to mask anything, because we don't have that discussion. And I think that it's important to know that we are anticipating enrollment to be down. We are hoping through our marketing efforts and through some of our great programs, and I have to say, the positive of getting all of those wonderful emails, because they were wonderful, even though there was some misunderstanding on the staffing from the Math and Science Academy, is that every single one of those parents was so complimentary of that program, and how yet really, how their child thrived in it, and how excited they are that they are going on to a STEM, you know, profession hopefully, and looking at college in the STEM program, and how engaged they were. And I think that, that, that was really exciting to hear, because you don't hear as much about that.
It's a model for other alternative programs.
My kids loved it. And, so I think that, I just want to make it public, too, we've got so many great things going for us as a district, and that we're hoping it's up, but I think that it's positive to be conservative. I think that I need to ask the next question. Is there any other areas in there that you are concerned about, that you want to make sure that we understand that's in this budget, since we will be issuing these, approving these contracts today?
We would like to begin planning the budget in detail. That involves shifting from M&amp;O, X number of positions into those cash control funds to make that two million dollars come about. So we will be changing the coding on these folks for payroll purposes come July 1, where they'll be coded from cash control funds and not coded from M&amp;O. You also notice up here, the slide that's in the, in your PowerPoint, we have, for the first time, self-contained special education teachers receiving the stipend, but it's being used for Indian Gaming. Indian Gaming is another QSI cash cont, not QSI, it is a cash control fund. And that's something then that we know we need to obligate and not use it for anything else, because we've got this balancing that we need to do. So I guess part of it is a budget planning process, that we feel then, if the board should do the tentative budget, we have some direction more formally than we might not have without any action. And the effort that we're going to put forth in deciding what to re-code to those cash control funds next year is something that likely will occur, and we won't have to do it and then back up, because you decided that maybe we were taking too much money from community education, or we were taking too much money from Civic Center. That's the kind of thing that partially we're trying to avoid in this scenario also.
Well, and I guess that's where my concern is. So I'll tell you, I'm going to, and I believe if I abstain from this vote, it is not because I'm not giving you my direction or my support in your budget, I am. I'm just abstaining because I am not comfortable with a tentative approval, making it now, and then having future boards thinking that they always have to have a tentative approval. And I just, I'm not sure about, it just doesn't feel right. It's all the thing I can say.
Board Member Greenberg, do you have any questions?
Uh, I mean, I guess my, my only question and should be answered with a yes or no is, I mean, based on these changes and reductions, do we feel that the teaching quality will be affected in a negative way? You know, is.
No. No, there's no direct, there's no direct correlation there. Because we are based on attrition, so we have, those teachers who have been deemed inadequate have already been notified and are not getting a contract. Those teachers who are surplus were done so based on their date of hire, so they will stay, and we just don't have a place yet for them, but we know that we have, the last couple of years, we've hired one hundred and fifty to two hundred new teachers every year, and so we will have, all of the, the successful teachers currently will continue, and then we'll be adding to that force.
Yeah, that's, that's perfect, thank you.
Mr. Gadd, I have a couple of quick questions for you. First of all, I really appreciate the detail on the program costs and the administrative positions, thank you. And I'm also looking forward to the April meeting. We've talked about these cash accounts at length, and I think that's something that's very needed, so I appreciate it. Regarding the program costs, you know, we had an earlier discussion about some of these things. For instance, we've talked about Anasazi, and we've, and Avid is in here as well. Are any of these time-sensitive from a level of commitment that drives this as well? Meaning, are we out, we discussing these 2019, 2020 program costs for Avid, et cetera, because we have to commit to them, and we don't want to take.
I think we want to know, should we, you know, Ken, would we have the funds, and should we begin planning the process for implementing the expenditure of those funds? And that's why you saw the Avid presentation here, just, just a little.
And we need this, we need to understand this level of commitment.
And for us to move ahead, you know, these program costs are, we can delete some of those, but we need to know if that's what the board wants to do, or if we want to proceed with these, then we also need that indication, so that we're not doing things that we find we're wasting our time.
No, I appreciate this. Just a curious question, the superintendent's search for fifty-four hundred dollars, is that what we're anticipating and just threw in there?
It's, it's an anticipation of adding to the, the budget that we have for the current year for next year, following through with the entire process.
Okay. Any further questions? Board Member Kravitz?
So I heard you explain, you know, you want the board to give you direction, rather than you give us direction. I, I just wasn't sure if we're better off just voting on the attrition of the teachers, rather than the board member.
The entire budget.
That, and the entire budget.
Well, and, and the reason that all of it is here is what I just, the program costs are a part of this tentative approval, those reductions administratively that you saw on the screen, that's a part of the tentative budget. So all of those pieces are there, they interrelate with one another in order to produce a balanced budget. So the intention of the agenda item is so that we know, we can proceed with all those pieces to a fairly, to a fairly significant extent by your approval. It's not just the attrition, it's the adds and the position deletes that are not affected necessarily by teachers. It's shifting those people out of a budget control fund and cash control.
Board Member Beckham?
So, in the years past, when you don't get tentative approval, how do you go forward? You just, I mean, you did.
You go forward, and you hope that the board, when we get to June, is fine with the budget and says, oh, I want to add, you know, I, I don't agree with this deletion of thirty teachers. I want to keep all of them, so we can reduce class size rather than maintain it. Well, but all of the contracts are issued, they're obligated. You're telling me if you don't follow through with that budget reduction, we're going to wind up now with an unbalanced budget to present to the state, because two million dollars of it, you just decided that you didn't want to do. That's, that's the concern, is that there's enough commitment on the part of the board to follow the plan. And if, and if that's not the case, then we'll probably operate more conservatively with the plan. We'll, we'll, we'll shorten up on some of the things that we want to implement here, waiting for that, more waiting for that June approval.
Right, right, because I think there's a lot that maybe could happen between now and May, that may change some of this. Could be for the positive, could be, you know, puts a little hiccup in some forward planning. Can I ask one question, then? If this was approved today under the tentative, and Avid is under, are you, is that going forward as an information item? I guess one question we didn't ask, what's the next step? Is the, are you going forward with it?
It's coming to the board meeting that we're having next week, or after spring break, so that we're.
It takes an action item.
It is an action.
Because it is a new program, it's reinstated, but it's a new program.
I didn't know that, since it was in there, and then this tentative budget, if it gets approved, it's in there. I didn't know if then, all of a sudden, it was approved without us.
Again, we're being conservative, making, making sure we cover.
Confirm that.
Making sure we cover the bases.
CSI, those stipends are in here. I mean, we have program costs listed, I didn't know the stipend, and will that be coming back to us as well?
These are new program costs.
Oh, new pro.
Yes.
Just as fiscal year program costs, it doesn't say new.
You also have an agenda item, I guess I'm speaking, I have to turn a little bit on capital outlay, same one, it's the next agenda. It allows us to get an early start on ordering equipment and doing projects. If we wait until June, most of the summer window's gone, so can't, it's, it's a different set of reasons, but it's, it's intention to be the same thing. It's a plan we want you to endorse, so we know we can present.
We'll talk, I think we need to talk that separately, because I think that's a completely different.
Yeah, it is.
But is CSI on here, under a program cost?
No, these are the new costs.
Well, there's a, says fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty program costs, not that, not that slide, there's slide.
Right, it's slide six or.
It's under administration. No, program costs, go back.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one.
Was that considered something different?
Or CSI, um, sup, supplements?
That's, that's the DSEG budget, the CSI costs, is the, is the desegregation budget, this is the M&amp;O budget.
Oh, okay, okay. So that's definitely, okay.
Board Member Perlaber? I guess I'll, I'll weigh in here. I, I certainly do recognize kind of the unusual nature of this, but at the same time, having clarity and commitment of our board of a certain direction, um, I think is good. Also, with a clear understanding that by setting this direction tonight, it also leaves us open to receive input, receive the changes that might come ahead of us, and it better clarifies why we might change this direction a little more transparently in the future. Kind of memorializes, okay, here's what we were thinking then, and, or now, and, and here's what's changed and why. I think it helps us set those stones in place a little more, so I am not overly concerned with setting this tentative budget tonight. I'll throw that in there.
Any other questions? Okay, then, do I have a motion to approve Action Item 6A, the 2019, 2020 Maintenance and Operations tentative budget?
So moved.
Board Member Greenberg makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Board Member Perlaber, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Board Member Beckham, are you abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. Board Member Kravitz?
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll vote aye with reservation.
Okay, motion passes, four with one abstatement. Board Member Beckham?
Okay, moving on, to approval of the 2019, 2020 Capital Outlay Tentative Budget.
Yeah, I'll figure it out. Hey, I think I have it, do you? I think I have it. Looks like it anyway. I think so, yeah. Madam President, members of the board, this is the capital budget, which you have previously seen. It has some unallocated funds in it purposefully, so that if things come along that we did not foresee, we have the ability to deal with that. There's an unallocated amount, as you see in this summary page, the second line down. We have a considerable amount across all of these five different capital funds totaling eleven million dollars at this point. So we feel comfortable, we're in a position to react to most things that may come along. It helps us with your tentative approval. It helps us look at what long lead items do we have, try to get those on order, and hopefully delivered prior to the start of school. And that means classrooms, and school offices, whatever we can do by having your endorsement, we can get the purchasing department to proceed. It also is a, is a really big help to the maintenance department, to Dennis's operation. I know these projects are now approved tentatively, there's an allocation amount, I can proceed with hiring some professionals to help me with plans and specs, I can get the project out to bid, get it awarded, and maybe actually, you know, accomplish some of the work during the summer recess period. So that's the reason for capital being here, is to try to get a head start on things that are contained in here, including technology. There's a significant piece of technology that's included in this capital budget. As you can see, it's on that third line down there, we have copiers. Classroom technology alone is four point two million. So we will be back to you with that agenda item, I believe, as early as March nineteenth, for you to take a look at, so we can get that equipment ordered and get it here before school starts. So that's, that's basically the capital.
Okay, discussion. Board Member Beckham?
Um, I see, I see this item is very different, because you've said something completely. You are actually ordering the item. So to me, you're not asking for a tentative approval, you are asking for approval, which I think is appropriate.
Well, and we, we, it's partly tentative, because the purchase order is qualified to the final adoption of next year's budget and delivery July first or after, so we meet that requirement accounting-wise in the fiscal year. So it is a tentative approval, because the purchase order to the vendor is a qualified purchase order that does not absolutely commit the district to making that purchase. And it also delays delivery on those, so that we don't have that issue to deal with. It really is helpful with getting orders placed and the vendor geared up to provide those things, and it's also helpful with contractors. But the contractors, again, are told, you can't, you're going to do the work, but you can't complete the work until after July, because that's technically when the funds are available. So, yes, it's, it's tentative to me, because there's qualifiers to the vendor that tells them this is not an absolute payment obligation.
But it's not tentative to the revenue board, because we are actually making an approval in which you are going out and getting a, taking an action, you are shaking a hand and saying, we are making this commitment with contingency, that it is not going to be a PO until after July 1, and we're not going to pay you till then. But it is actually a full-blown approval. If you order a piece of equipment that's special ordered, it might say in the contract that it's yours, even though you're going to be paying it past July, and it's not like tentatively, like we just was passed in the last one.
July, and it's not like tentatively, like we just was passed in the last one, it is an actual commitment. So to me, it's very different. It's also different because we know the funds are available in the funds, the DAA, the capital override, the adjacent ways, and the bond. I do have a couple of questions on the school plan, which I'll second, but just from a standpoint of what we're actually approving, we're not tentatively approving anything. If we're actually going out and purchasing equipment, we're making an approval.
But your, your approval is the direction to us to proceed in some procurement action, qualified procurement action, so that we're not waiting until June to start talking.
But I would say that's an approval.
Mr. Gad, is there the same ten-day waiting list in the capital budget as the MNO or all budget, we presented with chance for public hearing and then a final?
Yeah.
So, so presenting this as the final budget tonight and voting on it would, would not be sufficient for, to meet the legal requirements?
No. I mean, the legal requirement is an advertisement process, yes, and then there's a ten-day wait before you can actually adopt. And, and it's the entire budget that will have MNO, capital, all of the funds will be contained in that June effort to meet the legal requirement. So, so this, this, this is again, a direction from the board that we tentatively can proceed with doing some work in getting these-
That's very different.
Proceeding to go out and do procurement is very different from what you just stated, which is we are going to go out and contract some of this equipment. So if you're really looking just to go out so that you can do the procurement, because you're bringing this back, you said March nineteenth, right after spring break, or what, did you say?
No, no.
Okay, that was the date. This is still gonna be, you're still looking at a June approval date?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So then I would have to, to ask legal, is that legal to do? Can we give approval without giving approval, because we're not actually giving approval to spend the money to do what we're talking about?
Till after July first, that's right.
But there's a difference. When you have a, if we're signing a contract, you still have a contract to, um, you're, you're making a contract and you have to have approval for the contract. It's not when we pay it. So that's where I just need some legal advice. I'm, it's-
Any, any of these items, I'm not sure I'm answering your question, but any of these items that are above the bidding threshold will come back here for board action for a work. They will probably be here mainly in the month of May, early May, May, April. So you will know at that point where some of those firm commitments are being made at, but it will be the larger purchases. The smaller ones, we will be issuing purchase orders without formal governing board action, because the procurement code allows us to do that. This document gives you an idea of all of the purchases that we intend to make, and I'm saying to you before, some of the bigger ones are made, anything over a hundred thousand dollars, will be back here-
In May, prior to actual approval of the budget.
Before we issue a contract, before we issue the PO, you will be awarding, whether it's painting, roofing, laptop, concrete, anything that's over a hundred thousand dollars in terms of the package cost, will be back here for a work.
Right, it, 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 it's a budget that we are looking at right now, not, not the actual payments of things.
That's, that's, yeah, that's correct.
Can I have, I need a little clarity if possible, because I'm hearing what one member Beckham was saying, and I know my world, I issue purchase orders all the time. And it's really dependent on my agreement with the vendor, right? It's not, it's a legal agreement that I intend to, but there's sometimes not a commitment that you have to adhere to on the other end. It just locks down a price for me, or whatever. And so I would love some understanding from you. And I think this happened with the laptop purchases, if I'm not incorrect, you can look it up on the speaking, but you've got, they were purchased or the purchase order was put in the spring, and then they were actually invoiced in the following year.
Yes.
So my question to you would be, we are approving you, or giving you the ability to issue the purchase orders of these things, but where is the obligation on our end? Is there an obligation from each of these vendors, or is it something that we can just rescind the purchase order at any time, should we?
The vendors are well aware, when they receive a purchase order dated July first, and the wording that's in the body of the purchase order, that it's conditional upon formal adoption of the district's budget for next year. They know what that means. They can then operate accordingly. We are telling them, we want them to be ready to deliver as soon after July one as possible. Most of those vendors know that we're gonna be here, and we're gonna be paying our bills, and so they will take the lead in ordering and putting into their warehouse the kinds of things that are on that purchase order, rather than us waiting until July one and then handing them the purchase order and saying, oh, well, I've gotta go out to a supplier now, I've gotta get those items, gotta bring them in. That's what we save the time by giving that-
I understand the value of that, because you can lock down a better price for some things, absolutely, because they have to go out and find it sometimes, especially if it's in bulk or whatnot. I'm just, would, to Board Member Beckham's point, is where, is, is there any obligation or risk to us to approve this and issue this and then rescind this, and where, do we have any liability there?
I mentioned that the document that we're using is a purchase order that's heavily qualified with words.
Right, okay.
It's also got a, it does not have a current date on it, it has a July one date.
Right.
And they're told that they can't deliver until after July one. So you would never will be taking possession of the item itself until after July one to meet the accounting requirements with the fiscal year. So those vendors, which do lots of, lots of business with schools, they understand what you're doing. You're telling them that likely that order will become real, that you'll be paying for it, you want me to get it to you as soon after July one as possible, and you've done that through a qualified commitment with a subsequent dated purchase order that's qualified. I mean, I, that's the only, that's the best way I can describe it.
And I have no issue with anything as long as we don't oblige ourselves, and if we turn around and say, no, we've changed courses or gone with a different-
And we'll review with Michelle the wording that's in that purchase order to be sure that it meets the requirements. But I've done it before, it's a full paragraph in the body of the purchase order that's heavily qualified. So, and the vendor, they understand what, what that all means.
So, so I guess, but how does this differ from the years past?
You probably waited until after the district had, you know, you approved the formal budget in June.
But I don't-
Or, or we, we have issued purchase orders in advance, do not deliver till after July one, not bill or, or till after July one. The difference being, again, as with the previous case, in this case, we have a tentative budget that shows your approval of the direction that we're going.
We want to be transparent with the process, we want you to understand what we're doing, and we want your endorsement that what we've been reviewing with you for the past couple of months, you concur with that.
So then the second question is, on the school plant fund, the six million dollars, is that part of, that's not part of now the civic center?
No, this, this is sale money.
That's the sale money. And is it in, I'm, I am nervous approving six million for that, tentatively approving that, that could be used, when I don't know what it's going to go for, because I was in the impression we weren't going to be spending the school plant money this year, yet it's up there.
We have no designs or commitments to spend any of that money. You won't find any detail in here. If you would like to exclude that fund from this tentative approval, I'm fine with that. It's here to simply show you, it is a capital fund, how much money is in it, so we collected all the capital money together. So it's more intended to give you the idea of what's there, and ultimately, you know, there, there may be things that come up that require a large sum of money, and this would be a fund in which, you could almost deal with this fund as you might deal with a bond fund.
Right.
And that it's there, and it's sizable, and it's, you know, whatever you want to use it.
Yeah, I, I have to say, because of that last statement and how I am really now understanding, this is an overview of all the capital budget, and to give it a tentative approval to, as it is looking up there, spend all that money without us knowing where it's going, knowing that all you need is direction from us, and that you can go ahead and proceed with purchase orders, and you don't need the tentative approval that I-
What's behind here with the detail is what we intend to proceed with. And you will not find any detail nor any plan.
Right, so you'll know where I'm coming from. But I do give you the direction, that, that I know that we, that we have been looking at copiers, that we've been looking at, you know, certain items in these areas.
Technology, especially.
Technology, and I don't see that this is necessary to move forward. So I'll just put that out.
Okay. Any other questions? Board Member Greenberg?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve Action Item Six B, the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty capital outlay tentative budget? So moved.
So moved.
Board Member Kravitz makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Greenberg, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstaining or?
Um, no.
Motion passes four to one with Board Member Beckham voting no. Okay, moving to Agenda Action Item Six C, approval of guidelines for waiver of liquidated damages. Is there any discussion or on Action Item Six C, guidelines for waiver of liquidated damages?
I just have a quick question, because I brought it up at our last meeting.
Board Member Kravitz?
I had brought up whether or not other districts have a different schedule for liquidated damages for administrators versus teachers, for certified.
We do have an answer for that, Michelle or Dr. Bowman, whichever.
We both did some work in finding what other districts are doing, and we only found, I believe, one, Judd, that distinguished between certified and admin.
That's correct.
The number, and we did give you a rundown of that.
I may have seen that.
Let's see. Only one district differentiating.
Sorry, I didn't read this.
I don't have the numbers, but they gave us, I think it was like fifteen hundred and two thousand.
Oh, so it wasn't a major difference.
Yeah. Most of them had just one flat number for certified admin, no graduated.
No graduate, yeah, that also, okay, thank you.
Twenty-five hundred was a pretty common number.
Yeah, see that quite often.
Board Member Perlberg?
I have a quick question, and I absolutely believe I should already know the answer to this. What's the difference between this language and the language that was in the contract last year?
There is no difference in the language that is on this agenda item and what's been in the contract for the last three or four years. It's exactly the same.
Remember how long it's been. Okay, thank you, that's-
Board Member Greenberg?
Yeah, can I, just very quickly, is there, again, I'll just raise the point, is there a logical connection between this amount of money and how much it costs our team to try and, you know, replace a teacher versus replacing other staff members? My, again, my only, my only point is, you know, enforceability.
Um, as-
Doug? Well, I can try, I can try to respond. We, we tried to look at fixed costs for doing so, and it's so variable, depending upon the person who we're trying to replace. So example would be if it's a teacher and we have a substitute in the classroom, then we can project out a cost for how long the period of time is for replacement at the cost of a sub, plus then trying to figure out how much staff time is actually put into processing the posting process to the reviewing process to the interviewing process. It's just such a highly variable fixed cost that we, we really struggled with coming up with anything for you. So I, while I wasn't here last week, I listened to the meeting and I took that project on, and I just couldn't land at any solid conclusion for you. The data that we have, I feel good about the data we gathered from the school districts that are also, you know, most of the school districts in the valley are, are charging liquidated damages. And I know that's not your question specifically, but that was-
Right. No, that, that's, that's fine. I mean, if it is so variable with, regardless of position, you know, that's fine. I, I just thought that, you know, my, my gut instinct was, you know, trying to recruit, say, you know, an assistant super or, or somebody else, subject to these clauses, it might cost more than to recruit, you know, a new teacher. But may, maybe that's not the case, maybe that, you know, there, it doesn't matter, it's actually very variable, and they might cost the same. But that, that's fine, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, do I have a motion then to approve Action Item Six C, guidelines for waiver of liquidated damages?
So moved.
So moved.
Board Member Kravitz makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second, I'm sorry.
Board Member Perlberg, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. Okay, Action Item Six C, approval of employee contract forms. I suppose I should read these, right? Okay. Number one, certified teacher contract. Number two, certified teacher contract terminating. Number three, contract for special services providers. Number four, notice of classified appointment. Number five, classified administrator exempt. Number six, certified, certified administrator contract. Number seven, cabinet level administrator contract. Number eight, addendum two contract. Is there any discussion on Action Item Six C, employee contract forms? Board Member Greenberg?
Yeah, go ahead. Is it just me, or does somebody else have something?
No, it's you. Board Member Greenberg?
Uh, I would just like to raise, obviously, I think we've all received a number of emails concerning the language itself, most of which I think is, is fine. I think there's obviously concern from the SDA and teachers, whether members or non-members of the SDA, but just generally teachers and other staff, that they were not included as much as they would have liked to have been in these discussions, especially as I've been told, the language has been extended quite a lot, and that they would like the opportunity to review these documents a bit better and maybe have a more collaborative process. Obviously, we have seen one issue that, you know, Patty and I, to an extent, agree, agree on, as far as I'm aware, on the school closure language, in, in part because I think, you know, I've read other agreements that include the, you know, similar terms that I think are far more clear, and, and are kind of written in what would appear to be, you know, we want to address this, but not address this in a sense. But, you know, on, on the one hand, I do appreciate that the administration wants to get these out and issued. On the other hand, since, you know, we have spring break, you know, I don't know if it's, it's worth get, sending this out to teachers for their comments and review over spring break, since if we issue it Friday, my understanding is the next five days, next five school days aren't school days for the purposes of counting that fifteen day period anyways. So I don't know how much of a, you know, if we sent it out not to, not as, hey, here's the new contract, but hey, can you guys read this over and kind of give us your thoughts? You know, I don't know if that's worthwhile. But, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not entirely sold on the school closure language myself, and as I say, you know, the process has been an issue to teachers, and I think probably understandably so, if they have been involved, more involved in these discussions in the past, and they are no longer as involved as, as they once were.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Would you like me to respond to that?
Please.
We, we do not take every contract to every employee group to ask them how they feel about it. These are the district contracts that have been reviewed and revised by general counsel and outside attorney who works a great deal of her work with employee contracts. We do not have a recognized association that we would meet and confer with, and in my history, even the meet and confer process did not involve going over the contract. It was about salary and working conditions primarily. And contracts have, have been issued by, by the board approved and by the administration. I would say this also about the, the closure issue, that people are, that has what brought about most of the attention. The example that I've used, that board members, I think, have read from me, but just to, to make it public, we are reminding people who sign the contract, teachers, that they have a commitment to a hundred and eighty-six days, and they are agreeing to a hundred and eighty-six workdays. Now, three of those days are before school starts. A hundred and eighty are student days. Those are non-negotiable, that's a state law. Last year, the state did give everybody a pass after, after the Red for Ed walk, walkout. I personally do not believe- I personally do not believe that the legislature would be of the mind to give school districts that same kind of pass if another walkout occurred. So that leads, that's 183 days of the 186, so at least three days at the end. Last year, we extended the school year by three days for teachers. This year, if there is that kind of issue again, I would ask the teachers to call in, use their general leave, and they would not owe us anything, they'd be using their day. If they did not, the most they would owe us was three days, or the language says, the board may extend the year, or reduce the contract dollar amount on a per diem basis. So we're talking about at most three days, as opposed to, our reason for putting this in the contract is to remind them that it's 186 days, and if school is closed, so that we are not meeting that 186 days, the board may either extend the calendar or reduce the contract for days not worked. And we have to do one or the other after the contract is signed, otherwise, it's a gift of public funds for being paid for a day you didn't work. This is not meant in any way to be punitive, it is more precautionary. Please understand that this is the contract that you are signing, this is, this is the expectation of the school district, and frankly, the law, to fulfill a contract. So, I understand teachers saying now, well, we'd like to have input, I don't believe that that has happened in the past on the actual contract. We have informed teachers, Dr. Bowman informed teachers from the handbook committee, that included both SDA members and non-SA members. I have had conversations with teacher leaders, I've had conversations with teachers themselves on this issue, and when they realize it's a May, and realize what it looks like over 186 days, most of them have been fine with it, they just say, well, I wish, I wish we had had more input into that language. Well, at this point, we do not have a recognized bargaining group, or meet and confer group, there's nothing in the law that tells us we have to do that. But, but more importantly to me, we are trying to take care of the teachers and let them know in advance what could happen, but it would, even if all that happened, we'd come back to you, the board members, and say, what do you want to do about this? Because it's, because it's May, so.
Board Member Kravitz?
I just, and there's also, with concern about closures, we have to make instructional minute, minutes or hours, however the state looks at it, we have to make sure, because that was a big concern last year, that we fulfill our duty to the state, that we are teaching our students-
If we meet 180-
Adequately, meeting the required instructional minutes.
Right, if we meet 180 days, we will meet the instructional minutes, last year, they, they changed the rule, the pass they gave us was to say, well, we'll let you count instructional minutes rather than days, but that, that's not something that I believe that they would do again.
That, that's fine, I was just, I was just trying to relay the concerns, and perhaps that is, those concerns are actually better fit for a separate discussion at a different time, so I appreciate that, and I, from what I was told by, from what I was, from the information I received from teachers and SDA, they said that they were, you know, they thought Dr. Bowman and you and other administrators had done a very good job, so it certainly wasn't a criticism, it was just, I think the feeling was, and I can understand it, you know, the process involved, and, you know, kind of the inability to access some of that language.
And I will continue-
So that concludes, that concludes my, my commentary.
Board Member Beckham?
I'll just add, I agree with Dr. Krieger, and I believe that what we, what we did as a board is that we asked that we look at these contracts, because the contracts were very short and brief, and did not provide clarification to the employee. I see that this contract is a benefit to the employee, it is also a benefit to the district, because it clarifies items that were just left to interpretation, misunderstanding, or confusion. And I think that our general counsel and outside counsel have done a good job, as far as trying to bring in what would be important in a contract, what could be misinterpreted or confused, and so that it states what it is. I feel the school closure is a clear clause. As far as letting teachers know, my understanding is, is that we did talk with some teachers through HR, and then it was brought to a, the study session on, or studies, not study but not study, it's the other-
The special session.
Yeah, on, in, I think it was February 26th, so there was a first kind of look. Granted, it was not put on the website or the employee drive to be looked at, but I don't know that any of our contracts have ever been on the website that way, so that's not something-
But the review of them was in, if they had watched, if they'd watched the book-
In the study session, they could have studied it, and understand what was in there. So the good news is, is that when you get your contract, that the employees have the 15, or the certified have 15 days, or, because we're changing more than just certified, you have days to review it and ask HR any questions that you have, so that you have a full understanding of it, but I think it is a benefit to both the employee and to the district.
I, no, I, look, I, as, you know, I, I think it is, I personally think it is of the benefit to both the employee and to us, I think, again, the biggest issue was, they thought, because maybe, you know, perhaps it's simply a matter of the extent of the changes made, that, you know, we did go from something that was very bare bones, to something that was much more detailed, that, you know, especially given the political climate, you know, they, I can understand why, where they're coming from on that issue. And as for the school closure clause, you know, I, I'm not an expert on these things, I spoke to people, you know, people I depend on who understand these matters better than I do, and, you know, they raised questions to me about it, as to whether, you know, how necessary it was. But regardless, you know, that's, you know, that was my only point, is that a big, I think a big chunk of it, as Dr. Krieger pointed out, was, you know, perhaps a procedural matter, or a lack of understanding, that might have been better explained to people, had the process worked a little differently, but that is, I believe, a discussion, a separate discussion for a different time.
Any other questions, discussion?
No.
Okay, I am not going to repeat the same points that I said at the last special session. I respect what the board has said, and the discussion that has been brought forth, and Dr. Krieger's point regarding the school closure language, and why it's in there, and the fact that the board feels that it's great to have the clarity. I still will say respectfully, I haven't changed my mind, that I don't feel that it was necessary, but then again, that's why we are all here, we have different views on this. Having said that, is there a motion then, to approve?
Well, I, I will just, not to belabor, sorry, not to belabor the point, and I, and I certainly respect your opinion, but certainly as someone who was sitting as board president last year during that time, the confusion was rampant, we lived it, and it was painful, and any steps we can take to avoid that in the future is absolutely necessary to me, so I will just add that one point.
And I appreciate that, sure. Okay, do I have a motion to approve action item 6D, employee contract forms?
So moved.
Board Member Kravitz makes the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Beckham, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero.
We don't hear his vote, didn't hear his vote.
Sorry, aye, I didn't say aye, but I, aye.
Okay, Board Member Greenberg says aye, motion passes five to zero, employee contracts are approved. Moving on to action item E, 2019-2020, salary schedule, approval for issuance of contracts. Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the action item 6E, 2019-2020, salary schedule for the issuance of contracts? Board Member Beckham has a question.
I am sorry, I just want to clarify, this is for certified contracts, not all contracts, since it says issuance of contracts, I wanted to, I was told it was certified, just wanted to make sure-
We're doing the salary schedules.
Oh, sorry, because of that terminology when it says-
For issuance of contracts, all the salary schedules.
So, all we're really approving here is salary schedules, not the issuance, that's what always confuses.
Yeah.
Want to make that clear.
Yeah, that's, that's not clear.
Yep.
Okay. So, going back, do I have a motion to approve action item 6E, 2019-2020, salary schedules for the issuance of contracts?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, did she make it already?
She did.
Board Member Beckham makes the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Kravitz, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. Okay. Action item F, approval of the issuance of employee contracts and notice of classified appointments for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Is there any discussion?
No.
Board Member Beckham?
So, I, I'm under the understanding this is for certified contracts only, or is this for all contracts?
This is, this is to give the approval that we can issue based on the salary schedules and so forth, all of these group, where the contract forms were approved, to issue all of those. Now, we are issuing, we are prepared to issue the teacher contracts tomorrow, the administrative contracts will be before April 15th, and the other timelines for, I don't know, but-
Later in April.
Later, later in April, but this gives, this is, since you've approved the contract form and the salary schedules, it gives the, the approval to issue as we are prepared to do.
Prepared to do so.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay. Board Member Perleberg?
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the action item 6F, the issuance of employee contracts and notice of classified appointments for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Do I have a second?
A second.
Board Member Perleberg, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Okay. I make a motion to adjourn the special meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Kravitz, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero, meeting is adjourned at 6:22.